Good evening, welcome to the Foxborough Planning Board Meeting of December 10th, 2020. Just a little announcement for everybody who's in this room now and hopefully anyone who's outside in the hallway listening, that we have maximum capacity of 15 people in this room, including the board members, in order to enforce social distancing regulations. So, anybody who is outside, and they can choose who they want to attend, as long as we keep it into the maximum of 15, including all of us. And others who are out there are welcome to go home, go to an office, wherever they like, and attend by Zoom. They'll be able to, you know, comment or come in through Zoom, and we'll be happy to entertain them, whatever their questions or comments may be. Thank you very much, I appreciate it. And let's begin. There's no planners report, does any of the running people have active subdivisions that we know of?
We do. Do we have any active subdivisions, Gabby?
No, I'm recording.
Okay.
I can filibuster if you need me to.
So, wait just a minute, and then we'll do the...
Diana's working on the audio outside. They might not have been able to hear what you just said.
I can't hear anything.
Are you okay?
I'm sorry.
That's all right.
You imagine items, the London Estates?
Gabby, you might need to go to the microphone, you had to say it.
All right. Hey, you want to attribute this to me?
Do London Estates?
Yeah, the one in Wall, in your back.
Okay, sure. So, London Estates has asked for a bond reduction. Right now, they're seeking a reduction based on the work they've done out there. There was an estimate provided. We worked back and forth. Gabby did a great job working with Norm and making sure that all the work that's been done has, or all the work on the punch list, or given credit on the punch list was done. And so, the recommended amount, let's see here what it is, the new bond amount would be $275,161.21, which is a reduction of $222,961.80. That includes, if you recall, there was Phase 1 work that went over to Phase 2, so it was kind of two larger bonds combined.
Any questions from anybody on the board of Mr. Buckley, who is representing him, or anything else?
No.
No? I'll make a motion to approve the reduction of bond as invented.
I'll second that.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Very good, thank you, Mr. Buckley. Minutes?
I got one correction from the November 12 minutes from Gary. The rest of them are okay, I guess, because I never heard from anybody.
All right, then I'll entertain a motion to approve the minutes of September 10th, 2020, September 24th, 2020, and November 12th, 2020.
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
I don't have a formal planners' report written, but I can go over a few things.
Please do.
Tidbits of information. In our ops meeting on Wednesday, it was discussed that we are shooting for a May town meeting. So that's probably, I don't know if there'll be a special one in the interim, probably depends on the federal government and any budget action at that level. But we do know that we are hoping for a May town meeting, so we'll be planning accordingly. I would imagine, given the loss of a year, that it'll be a rather busy town meeting. I know we could put forward quite a few zoning articles, most of them housekeeping, sort of cleaning up things, but we'll have to see. Sometimes that's not the best thing to do, you know, if it's a real full, important agenda, warrant, shall I say. So we'll have to play that by year, but we definitely will have a few items to look at, probably. Let's see, other thing, we are going to be, I'm working on a possible grant opportunity. It's a little bit of a long shot. The state is trying to provide some resources for towns and businesses to work together. So there's something called a Rapid Recovery Grant. It's being offered through the same program that did the wayfinding grant, so they're really focused on downtowns. We're kind of packaging it with, we're also going to be working on a Shared Streets application to try to get some improvements on the crosswalks uptown, and looking at really pedestrian safety. So that's the Shared Streets. That will actually fund construction. And that's, it's, Shared Streets is more meant to be on a temporary basis, but they're segueing into improvements that will help on a permanent basis as well. So we are trying to sell them on the fact that as the spring develops, we're still going to need to be outside a lot, and we're going to want to draw folks uptown. And so having, obviously, safer pedestrian crossings is something we've needed all along, but certainly if we're trying to encourage people to be outside, we want to do it. So we're going to try to sell it on that angle. And then to complement that, we have this Rapid Recovery Grant Program. Now that's no, that's not cash, that's technical assistance, and unfortunately, it's not construction or implementation. But I thought, and again, it's a long shot, but I'm going to try to sell it on the parking plan. You know, one of the concerns that's been all along with uptown development, and as we see revitalization come, is this concern that there's not enough parking out there. We have a 2012 plan, there's been a call to update it, so I thought perhaps we could try to package that up as somewhat also related to recovery. As uptown recovers, one of the concerns is parking, in combination with pedestrian safety and wayfinding, let's improve, or look at the Central Street parking lot and how we can maximize that and make sure that's the best asset for uptown, and then also tie that into a overall parking study. I will admit, it's, you know, a possible stretch, and it's due next Friday, so the timeline is very short, but I'm going to, it's, I'm going to give it a shot. I know they, they very much want to help communities in some way, so if we can use this in the short term, you know, in the spring and the summer, and then leverage it into long-term action for our uptown, I think that would be great. So, we're going to give that a try.
Who do those grants come through, what department?
Shared Streets is through Mast dot, Mast Department of Transportation, and the Rapid Recovery is through the, what's the word, MDI, Massachusetts Downtown Initiative Program, which is through DHCD.
Okay.
So, so we'll see. It's very, it's going to be very competitive. I think every community is going to be doing the same thing, so we'll see. And I, unfortunately, you know, towns like Norwood and those areas that have streets that can be closed off, and parks that can be combined with lots of restaurants around it, those are made for these types of improvements, and they're the no brainers. Ones we're doing are a little harder. We don't have the economy of scale uptown to kind of say, hey, help us do this, this, and this, because we can actually show a result. But we're going to try, and I have a feeling that this next round, given that they're starting to look at permanent, they're cognizant that not every town is set up like, say, in Norwood, you know, that we do have more incremental things we can do. So, we're going to give it a shot, and all we can do is try. Let me think if there was anything else.
Excuse me, who was the, who was the traffic consultant that did the fire station work?
Par Corporation?
Right. So, that's still live, isn't it?
Yes.
I thought it was.
Yeah, so in fact, I should have mentioned that. In our Shared Streets application, we met with the consultants that are working for the program, and they're offering free consultations to try to build the most advantageous project. So this company specializes in roundabouts, that's why they gave it to us, the rotaries. And the Phase 2 work over by South Street and Central Street is being looked at right now, and there's a chance that we could combine that into the crosswalk work. It's really kind of looking at the holistic roundabout.
Well, that's why. You had talked about crosswalks, and my recollection was, there was even some talk about at least reevaluating some of the positioning of the current ones.
Absolutely.
All right, just want to make sure that was still in the works.
Yes, yes. But yes, we, Chris Gallagher had paused the Phase 2 work just because of the shutdown. He didn't want to, and the Phase 2 work is figuring out a way to ensure that folks who are on the middle, in the inside lane of the rotary, don't exit to Central Street. And, but he wants to do it in a way that doesn't involve a lot of, what's the, surface equipment, just because of the buses and the trucks and whatnot. So he has, he's very limited in what he can do there, but that is something he was always wanted to do. So, but now, like, one of the things I said to Chris in the conference call was, well, I know that without schools in session are limited, and he said, actually, we're seeing even more buses right now because they're doing two-day, two-a-day sessions, so there's actually more trips. So, we might look at that, and that way, if the state is willing to fund some of this. As an aside, the concrete, or the curbing for up by the Orpheum Theater or the Marilyn Rodman Center is, has been, was delivered Monday, so that next week is when they might...
So they're not going to do that?
Yeah, they're going to be trying to do that next week. It's being done internally, that's why it's, you know, being managed that way. So yeah, so that Phase 1, that we call that Phase 1 up at Main Street, that is going to be installed, that is ready for installation. And Phase 2, we are trying to get some state funding to look at that in conjunction with the crosswalks. Because we have heard people loud and clear that the crosswalks are quite unsafe. What made us think of it is this funding could pay for those flashing lights.
Right.
But like Chris said, we also have to be very deliberate and careful of how you do that, because if you have so many flashing lights around it, then people get that fatigue where they don't notice it. So there's, it's very prescriptive locations, but we do know, you know, that the crosswalk, for example, over, what is it, in front of South Street Pizza there, that's, everybody's looking the wrong direction, you know, they're looking left, and they're going, and there's a crosswalk there. So we've heard loud and clear that that's a huge concern.
Right there.
Yeah, so that's the one we highlighted, as, you know, let's get this one looked at sooner rather than later, so we'll see.
What I swear, I still think the one coming out from Memorial Hall has to be looked at, only because where the, you know, the stop line right now is before the crosswalk, which it has to be, but that's got to be a good 20 feet before you get out in the rotary, and it's just a disaster.
Doesn't work. Well, like Chris pointed out, we have 13 crosswalks to look at as part of that scope. So we'd be looking at all of them. The location, whether they need to be moved, whether they need to have some sort of improvements, sometimes you need like a safety island, I mean, we don't, so we're going to have to take a look at all that, and then figure out if lighting is, the flashing lights are warranted, and how many we could do, and so. And alongside that is also trying to get people to stop. So if anybody's listening, stop exiting from Central Street, from, from the inside lane of the rotary to Central Street. Be on the outside lane.
I do that all the time.
And use your signals when you want to turn. That's my PSA on how to make the rotary less painful.
Okay.
All right, I filibustered until 7:15.
Excellent. Good job. All right, it being 7:15 PM, we have a special permit onsite, ground-mounted solar photovoltaic installation, 9 Maple Place, Isaacson Solar.
So you have a public hearing, if you want to open the public hearing?
Sure, let's open the public hearing.
Doing everything by the book.
Do we need a, do we need a vote for it?
We do.
Yeah. I make a motion, we open the public hearing on the solar array at 9 Maple Place. Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, very good. Representing Isaacson?
Aye.
Feel free to take a seat in front of a microphone, so we can hear you and...
Good evening, everybody.
Good evening.
My name is Brad Camille, I'm managing partner, lead project manager for Isaacson Solar. This process started beginning of this year, met with the Alinsky family at their residence, you know, new residents of Foxborough decided to put their roots down here, and raise their young family here, and excited to do that. We were excited to provide them an option to get their power from their solar panels. In this case, we need to be on the ground. Their house is pretty, I'm not going to say historic, because I don't believe it's a historic home, but it's, it's a beautiful old Victorian-style house, and I believe putting panels on top of that house would really degrade from the curbside appeal of the actual home. So we quickly pivoted to a better solution to putting it on the ground, where it would give them enough power for them to basically have a sustainable source for the next 25 to 30 years, again, in an affordable way, so that they can provide all their power there on the ground. Open up to questions, wherever you guys, you know, need from us, but this actual ground-mounted solar system is fairly small when we're talking about solar. You know, there's, there's large systems out there, there's large solar farms, so to speak. What we're talking about here is a 6x5 array, so we're only talking about about 30 panels. It's under 500 square feet in nature, and it's, it's roughly 14 feet high in the rear, and about 2 feet high on the front. And again, it's, it's a ground-mounted solar system, and the bottom, as you can see on that diagram there, how it is actually installed into the ground, there's no foundation work, there's no site prep or anything, it's very environmentally sensitive, it's helical piles, these screws are galvanized steel, and they're basically just screwed right into the ground, so it doesn't affect the watershed in the area, still allows water to, you know, infiltrate that ground without, you know, disturbing anything in the nearby vegetation or anything like that. And we applied for that permit, I believe, in the beginning of September.
So, and the, and the building department issued you the permit, correct?
Correct, correct. We, we applied for permits, electrical and building, on September 9th. Received a, an approved building permit on September 15th, and on October 27th, we did proceed with this install, so the foundation is in the ground.
Okay, and so there was, you know, I've been out there, I presume that other members of the board have been out there. So, it appears that, for obvious reasons, there was a tree or a shrub of some kind there, a tree, it looks like a stump of a tree there, so that you removed that in order to make room for the installation, correct?
Correct, correct.
And how did you, how did you determine the location of the actual array?
So it was a, you know, it was a cohesive process where, originally, you know, we were kind of looking at the, at the roof, and we quickly ruled that out, and when we pivoted to ground, my, without looking at the nearby trees, the most logical location would have been a little bit more inland or in towards the property. When we quickly realized that we could take down that one tree to basically open up some sunlight, that was the most logical location, without disturbing a number of trees, and also while trying to keep costs as minimal as possible for, for the homeowner. So, the sighting of it was a combination of mainly solar access to make sure that there was enough sunlight that could hit this array, so that it could produce the power that, that the family needs, and also with it being as minimally invasive as possible, because if we did move it a little bit further down that property line, there's an entire row of trees there, and we'd have to take down, you know, dozens of trees rather than just that one.
Was there any consideration given to, and this is just from aerial photos, as well as an onsite, you know, inspection of the property?
Sure.
Of locating that to the left rear of the structure of the dwelling?
The left rear, so looking, looking at the home...
From the street, yeah.
Yep, behind the home.
It seemed to be sort of an open area, and...
Yeah, you know, I think initially, we did look at it there, and then upon looking at the simulation, you know, the house was going to shade that area out. So, you know, if you, if you picture the sun in the, in the sky, you know, it would hit sunlight in that spot until about noon time, and then once afternoon time hit, basically the shadow of the house would basically make that solar system obsolete in that location. So yes, we did look at it, but again, quickly, we realized on that southwest corner of the property gave us the most solar access to make the project viable.
One other question, just briefly, I mean, in like absolute Cliff Notes form?
Sure.
Could you walk us through sort of how this particular system works, as the applicant's storing power and batteries? Is that going to meet 100% of their energy needs onsite?
Yeah, absolutely.
Does any of it go back to the grid? I mean, I...
Of course, of course. So, so the easiest way that I can describe this, and it'd be as Cliff Notes as possible, basically those panels are going to be out in the yard, and when the sun comes up, it's going to hit those panels. And if the family is home, you know, with their lights on, they're going to use that solar power right off the panels. It's going to flow into their house, and they'll be able to, to use that solar power right off the system. If the family is not home, if they're working, or they're on vacation, or what have you, that power is still going to enter the home, and it's going to look for a place to go. Now, there's no batteries onsite here, so if, if they're not using that power that's coming directly off of the system, it's basically going to leave the house, and their electrical meter on the side of the home is going to spin backwards, and it's going to give them credit for everything that they just produced. And then when they get home later that day, and they start flipping on lights, or turning on the television, or what have you, they're just pulling in that power, basically, that they made earlier that day. So the grid is giving them credit for everything that they're going to produce, whether they need it right off the panel, or whether they need it in 12 hours, in three, in three days, three months, a year, those credits don't expire.
Sure.
Kind of, kind of flipping the ratio on its head, they're using the greatest backup, saying, hey, if, if, if we don't need all this power, you have to pay us credit for it, we can pull it in. And it, it's estimated to be right around 100%. The, the family did a pretty, pretty extensive renovation to do heat pumps in, in HVAC project that also gives heat and cooling, and that's all electric, and that, that was part of the ecosystem of adding the solar to get them close to 100% of their offset from, 100% of their power from their panels, to provide their heating and cooling as well.
So even without like a Tesla battery pack, they think there'll be net zero?
Pretty close, pretty close, which is, is pretty fantastic. Not everybody is able to get there, you know, and they wouldn't be able to get there if that ground mount wasn't in the location that it is.
They just better make a...
So, you looked at, you looked at the ability to move it closer to the house, and it was strictly based on the fact that there were, that there were other trees there that prevented, didn't prevent you, but brought you the idea of moving it to where you actually located it, close to the driveway and the freestanding garage area there that's there?
Yeah, exactly. The, the other locations didn't provide the same solar access, and then the closer you got to the house, I think it just, there's other landscaping and hardscapes there that became a logistical issue.
You think you're getting something from the other night? What night was that? Monday night?
I don't, I can't believe you got...
And, and the consideration for a ground-mounted system was really not so much structural on the dwelling, it was aesthetic?
I mean, it was a combination of everything. It was, it was aesthetic, the roof is older, so they would definitely have to replace the roof if they wanted to put solar, and then they couldn't fit the amount of, they couldn't fit 30 panels on that house to get them to where we need, and if, even if you found a way, you'd probably be looking at, you know, 60% of their power needs, you're looking at the same amount of panels than if you just put them perfectly south-facing on this ground-mounted structure. So it was, it becomes cost prohibitive if you were going to put it on the house, especially adding, adding in a roof cost to that as well.
Are these motorized at all, do they adjust?
No, sir. They're just completely stationary. We believe in providing the best warranty possible, and that, that is the case with just having stationary ground-mounted solar panels.
What about glare?
What about what?
Glare, sun glare.
In, in what way? I guess I'm...
Glare shining into, yeah, into somebody's windows, burning somebody's lawn?
Sure, sure. You know, it's kind of a, it's a soft science, unknown exactly where the glare, you know, is going to come from or will be. It's not like a mirror, you know, it's, it's, if you're holding a mirror in the sunlight, you're getting a clear, you know, reflection on that. These solar panels are extremely efficient, and they're, they're all black, they're a matte black, so there's not different colors going on here, and they absorb the most sunlight that is on the market right now. I have the same solar panels on my house. I can personally say that I've never had any issues with glare at my house, and we've done hundreds of ground-mounted solar systems throughout Massachusetts and Rhode Island, and I never once have had a complaint about glare. Not saying it doesn't exist, but I never once have, have actually had a glare issue, so to speak. Hopefully that, does that satisfy?
Yeah.
Are you asking? Yeah. It's not, it's not a common thing that I, that I'll see. I'm not saying that it doesn't exist, but it's definitely a secondary concern, so to speak.
So, this is kind of a, this is kind of a difficult question to ask, but when you do this, when you put a ground array in like this?
Yes, sir.
What do you do in terms of taking into consideration the neighborhood, the house next door, the house behind, or whatever it might be, so that, so that they feel like that at least there was some due diligence done in thinking about, I mean, yeah, obviously, you work for customer A...
Yep.
And your purpose is to give them as much power as you can with the best, the best, the least expense, and, and provide them what they need.
Mm-hmm.
But I don't know how your company works, and, you know, I mean, I drove by there, you know, I could see, I could see the existing framework from Maple Avenue, through the houses, and then when I drove up, right next to it, I could clearly see...
Yeah.
How close it was to the driveway, the freestanding garage, and in its own sense, how close it is to the neighbor just to the south of them.
Sure.
So, how do, how do you guys look at that as part of what you do for, for a job?
Yeah, of course. I mean, we by no means look at a project and just are trying to get as many jobs in as possible, and just run and gun kind of thing. You know, we try and, we try and look at it from a cohesive perspective of, you know, does it, does it make sense there? You know, we try and put it in a place that makes the most sense for, for the homeowner, but also keeping aesthetics in mind. You know, when we do rooftop arrays, for example, you know, we try and keep them consolidated so that there's not a patchy, you know, design. We try and hide the conduit so that you can't see it from, from the street. We put skirts in so that you can't see underneath the panels, so we make a sleek design possible. I think with ground mounts, it's a, it's a little bit of a different beast, you know? At the end of the day, it's still going to be a ground mount, you know, in the, in the yard, you can only dress them up to, to a point. You know, with, with a project like this, we really, we do lean on the HJ, we lean on the, the authority having jurisdiction of the town. So, you know, as long as it satisfies the requirements of the homeowner, we then apply for the permit, you know, assuming that we do the right due diligence and making sure that it's not completely out of place. And then we rely on, on the bylaws and these exact processes, you know, where if something was needed, we apply for that permit, and then we usually find out, okay, we need to do X, Y, and Z, or we ask the right questions on the front end, frankly, to, to avoid a situation like this. But, you know, we do try and take into consideration the neighborhood, and part of that is also doing the ground-mounted structure that we pick, being the sleekest ground mount that we can physically install. There's no ugly concrete footings or foundation work that needs to happen, it's just a framework, and then all you're going to see is a black sail, basically, one mounting plane, all black, we use all-black clips, you're not going to see different colors and that kind of thing. In this specific location, you know, it's, it is within the dimensional setbacks, I think, that were, that were outlined to us, and there is a shed or a garage right there. And it's roughly the same footprint of that shed, no bigger. So, you know, it did take into that consideration where I didn't want to put something that was, you know, much larger than this there. You know, we certainly could have scaled this another 6, 12, 18 panels, you know, just basically up to the utilities discretion, but we wanted to try and keep it as small a footprint as possible while still having a performance function.
I appreciate you trying to compare it to the size of the garage, the shed, now the buildings, but those are buildings, they're not metal frames that are not attractive. Buildings you have to accept as a neighbor, but see something like that as a monstrosity in somebody's front yard, it bothers me. Is there any way of camouflage in there? Could you, could you put arborvitae's around it or something, and obviously control their heights, but is that something that could be done?
Yeah, I think, you know, from, from a function standpoint, you wouldn't want to put arborvitae's on the south side of it, you know, within, within 10 feet anyway, because then that's going to shade out the system, and then you're not going to be producing any power, you got a solar system in the shade. We have seen customers in the past add arborvitae's around the rear of that, of that ground mount, right? So on, on the back end, where you're not seeing basically that, I mean, I call it a sail, but just that plane, right, on the rear of that, you can plant and dress up the landscape a little bit. You know, I had a, a customer a couple years ago, and he built a cladded fence, you know, that, that basically framed the entire ground mount, but it, but it wasn't on the front side, you know, he still saw the solar panels. On the back side, it created almost like a shed-type-looking structure, just with a shiny black roof.
Was that in the front yard as well, or was that in the back?
It was, that specific use was a, was a carport, it was, it was a lot larger than this, and, and it was in his front yard, yeah, it was.
So, how far away from the array towards the south could you safely put some plants that might shield a neighbor and not interfere with the solar gain that you need for the, for the array?
You know, within, within, you wouldn't want to put it any closer where it's going to cast a shadow. So if, if you think at its, at its lowest height, you know, with the sun being where it is, if you put a, a plant that's eventually going to be 10-foot, you know, you got to figure it's probably going to cast at least a 10-foot shadow. you know, you've got to figure it's probably going to cast at least a 10-foot shadow. Um, so it, it, it kind of depends. With the driveway being right there in the south, I don't think you, you'd have an option to really plant anything before the driveway that would reasonably, you know, impede the view and not shade it out. Uh, maybe there's an option, I don't know where, exactly where that property line is on the other side of that driveway, um, but if that's the concern, you know, I'm, I'm sure that, that the two homeowners could probably get together and decide to plant something there that would maybe impede the, the view shed if that was a, you know, a severe concern.
Okay. I mean, it looks like you have very little setback on the garage itself, so.
Yep.
Within a couple of feet of the line, I would guess.
Correct. Uh, that, that is, the, the as-built, this isn't perfectly to scale, um, but it's wide enough where you could actually fit a, a truck between the corner panel in that, uh, in that, in that garage shed area. Um, so it's, it's roughly nine, nine feet, I believe it is.
And then the width of the garage on top of that, yeah.
Yep, yep. And it's on an angle, so it's not, it's not a perfect dimension. Um, but yeah.
If I could just, I just want to make clear, um, that this is a special permit, so there's criteria that, um, needs to be, the board needs to make findings on, and I'm not going to torture us all by reading them, but I'll just give you the quick highlight where the, the findings, a fact you need to make is that the community needs will be served by the proposal. Number two, traffic flow and safety, including parking and loading, will be served. Three, adequate, adequacy of utilities and other public services. Four is neighborhood character and social structures. Five is impact on the natural environment, and six is potential economic and fiscal impact to the town, including impact on town services, tax base, and employment. So while you're, you know, reviewing and listening, keep that in mind, because at, at the end of this, you need to be thinking of those criteria.
And just to clarify that, especially, for example, on number two with traffic flow and safety, we're not necessarily talking about that those needs are served, but they may not be adversely impacted.
Right, or they could just be sort of non-applicable, you know, like tra, you know, something like traffic.
A lot of these are NAs.
Yeah, so that's, you know, that would highlight the, the ones that are really applicable.
It's really, four and five are really the only two that.
Yeah.
That I think are really a concern at this point.
Yeah.
Yeah, agreed.
Um, and I should note that tonight there are only four of you present. Um, so, uh, we are recording this, or this will be available, so if it did go more than one night, Tracy could try to opt in as, um.
Mullins.
As a Mullins rule, but for right now, if a decision were to be made tonight, it would require a four, a unanimous vote of the four of you, because it is a super majority requirement with the special permit.
All right. Um, any other questions from the board? Is there anyone in the audience who has questions or comments they'd like to make at this time? Yes, sir, just state your name and address for the record.
You should probably come up to that microphone over there.
My name is Alexander Liensky. I am the owner of Nine Maple Place. Um, as my installer has already said, you know, I'm a father. I have a two-year-old, you know, I'm an immigrant. I came here from Russia, Soviet Russia. You know, we, we took furniture off the streets and, you know, I moved into this lovely town, you know. I became a police officer. My wife's a school teacher. Um, I spoke with one of my neighbors before I put this in. I told him, hey, I'm going to take this tree down, I'm going to put in some solar panels. He said, yeah, that's fine. So, I mean, I, I tried to tell everyone in the neighborhood before I did it that, you know, I was definitely going to, you know, do this. Um, we tried to do our due diligence, you know, we tried to do the 15-foot. I'm going to try to make this as nice as possible. I mean, I bought a fixer-up in Canton, and then within a few years sold it and made a hefty profit because I was able to make it nice. I was planting, I already built, I already planted a, um, a weeping cherry, uh, for a third tree, so it'll grow in, so then when you're driving up, you won't actually be able to see the solar panel. Give it a few years, they grow pretty fast. And I will be, uh, dressing up the, uh, the rear with, uh, a variety of roses, uh, grapevines, and arborvitae's. Um, I just want the council to know that, to take that into consideration. You know, I'm not trying to be a bad neighbor. I've had nightmare neighbors. You know, so far everyone in the neighborhood has been very polite to me, you know, and I want to kind of maintain that. But I also, you know, you know, I want to work hard. I want to build something for my family to be proud of, and, you know, I paid oil this year, and it was a nightmare. So I got these heat pumps, you know, I did my research. I said if I had solar panels, I can really mitigate the costs. And, you know, I know that solar panels can raise the value of a property, especially, um, you know, if, if the solar panel raises my property's value, then all the other properties around go up. I also understand that there's an aesthetic, and I'm going to do everything in my power to, you know, make it look nice. Again, it's a solar panel, but I'm also willing to work to, you know, make the, the white frame look more like appealing, if that's a, if that could help.
And so were, did any of the neighbors that you did speak to have any objection or anything?
No, I spoke with a neighbor named Peter, and, uh, you know, we were talking about me selling my, uh, my garage shed to him because I wasn't really using it, and he was like, yeah, fine. And it turns out, we never ended up doing it. But I let him know, I'm like, hey, by the way, just letting you know, I'm going to be cutting that tree down and putting down solar panels. He's like, yeah, that's fine, doesn't bother me. And, uh, I mean, I don't know if anything's changed since then, but, you know, I tried to do my due diligence and be upfront and honest, because I didn't want any surprises.
Okay.
We might have folks on Zoom.
Yeah, so how, how do you want to handle that?
Um. You want me to step back?
Sure.
Okay.
Um, so I guess if folks on Zoom have a comment, they could just unmute themselves only about the Maple Place, um, application, not about any other applications tonight, but if, if, um, any of the neighbors or parties in interest.
And we'll try to take you one by one.
So in the upper left, oh, you don't know, you can't see. Go ahead and speak, you have your hand raised. You've got to unmute yourself.
Ryan Cass, 28 Clocassett Street, two doors away. Can you hear me all right?
Yes.
Now we can.
Okay. Uh, let's see, there's some points, there's some questions that have to be asked, and some points that have to be made. Uh, what's the name of the gentleman who just gave, who works for the company that put this in?
Brad Camille, sir.
Brad, okay, Brad. Brad, the, the house, um, that Alexander lives in used to belong to my mother-in-law, and, um, there's a 50-year roof on it, so your information on the roof is incorrect. Uh, you don't have to replace a roof to put solar panels on. The roof is perfectly sound. Um, the backyard where we talked about, you said it was going to be shaded from, uh, the sun, was a gigantic dahlias garden. Uh, plant, all the dahlias are planted there. They're summertime and early fall plants planted there specifically because the light was so good, not because the light was bad. They need full sun. There's full sun in the backyard. There's plenty of, there's five different places where you could take the solar panel and put it in the backyard, and it would receive full sun. Um, there's no question about dozens of trees being cut down. There aren't dozens of trees on the property. It's impossible to cut down trees that aren't there, sir. Um, uh, we are concerned that the permit was granted with a different placement of the array on the original permit. When the, when the town posted this information that this, uh, hearing was going to be heard, uh, we went online, and the placement of the panel was completely different from where it is. It was at least 50 feet separate from where it was. It was shown in the backyard, and actually, it's in the front yard. So, uh, that was fixed subsequently on, uh, on, uh, the website, the planning board website, but I don't know, and you have to tell us, the planning board or somebody, was the permit issued to do the building based on where the, where our original site was shown? Um, and besides this is the question of how does one set up the, set, set up the basis for this, uh, array? Uh, and then along comes the, uh, planning board, uh, this meeting tonight.
Hearing.
The hearing, yes. It seems to me that.
It's in the ground.
That it's already in the ground, for goodness sake, so, um, I wasn't the person, there was a person on your board that called it a monstrosity in the front yard. It wasn't me. Uh, but the neighborhood character is, uh, uh, under consideration. Uh, Alexander seems like a nice fellow. Um, he didn't talk to us about it, and he said he talked to lots of the neighbors, and then he said he talked to Pete. So, uh, there's a difference between talking to lots of neighbors and, uh, I don't think Alexander needed to talk to us, but he said he talked to a lot of neighbors, and, uh, maybe he can tell us who he talked to.
I, I, can I, can I speak?
Can you wait just one second?
Thank you, and thanks for listening to the board.
You got one second.
I met Alex.
Excuse me, excuse me, can you just wait one second, because I, I think we want to address some of the questions that Mr. Cassie had.
Good.
Certainly, certainly, sorry.
So just so, so you understand, Mr. Cassie.
Yes.
The, the applicant, um, and his representative went directly to the building department.
Right.
The, 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 the permit was, that permit, the building permit was issued, um, in error. I mean, it's, it's legal, I mean, that they did it. It wasn't negligent, but they did not realize that the bylaw stated that it's allowed in the R15, but by special permit only. So, once this, once this came to light.
Yes.
We were required to hold a hearing in order to make a decision about whether we believe it can stand as a special permit.
Thank you, Mr. Winfield.
Thank you for clearing that up.
So.
May I speak?
Who speak?
Yes, you may. Um, I'd like to just make a, make a note. I apologize, I forget your name as well. Um, however, when we applied for the permit.
Brian.
Sorry, say it one more time?
Brian.
Brian, with a B.
Brian, okay, thank you so much for, for your comments. Um, I just want to address the, the location of the array. Um, when we first applied for this permit, um, on the location, well, we did apply using the plan set showing that it was going to be 30 feet off of the road and about 26, I'm sorry, 31 feet away from the south property line. Um, there was a mix-up with the plan sets that were given to the plan, planning board when we advertised, when this came up, um, when we were issued the stop work order to put out the, uh, the advertisement that this was happening. We issued the wrong plan set to the planning board to advertise. However, the permit, when the building, um, department issued us this permit, they were looking at the, uh, the plan set that did show the array being where it is now.
Okay.
Okay.
And I'd, I'd like to also, I don't know if we have the capabilities, um, but if we can pull up that plan set, I don't know if we can share that plan set. There's, on page two, there's a vicinity map, um, that clearly shows like an overhead view of, of the property. And I just want to, you know, I'd, I'd rather, I'd rather look at facts than, um, kind of just look at.
Is that on the plan set on the bottom left?
Bottom left, yeah. If you look at the bottom left plan set.
Bottom left plan set.
On page two.
It's on the right line, getting.
No problem. Uh, but you'll see on that, on that vicinity map, it's in the top right, uh, section of that, um, that plan set. It actually shows an overhead view of the property. It shows you where the house is. Um, it shows you a lot of the trees as well. You, you can actually see shadows in, in the backyard from these large trees that are casting, and it, it looks like it's, um, it's on the other, uh, the other document.
They're scrolling.
That's the, uh, technical data.
I'd like to speak.
Hold on.
Thank you.
You'll get an opportunity, sir, just wait one minute.
Thank you, thank you, sir.
You're welcome.
I guess, uh, they can pull it up when, when we get it.
I'm going to do it.
I just want to make a note of those shadows in the, in the backyard that you can clearly see. There we go. If you scroll down to the second page, and maybe we could, we could zoom in, right there, the vicinity map, uh, was just on there, right there.
Right there.
So if you, if you can see that, uh, the, the location of the house is in the top left section of that screen, um, there is a, a massive cluster of trees on the bottom right that basically takes up the entire bottom quadrant of that property. Um, as, as the sun passes by, your shadows, you can kind of figure out what time it is, if it's summertime, based on where your shadows are pointing. So if you kind of, um, if you can hit no thanks on enjoying the, this app, it'll show us the vicinity, uh, map that I'm referring to here.
Say no thanks.
If you can hit no thanks on the top right, where it says enjoying this app.
Oh, okay, go on.
No problem. And then just scroll up slightly for me.
We want to see the picture.
Yeah, we wanted to see that picture, the, the colorful picture there. Uh, you can see the shadows, uh, of these large trees casting shadow in, in the, in the back property. Um, that's at 11:00 AM roughly, and you can see even at 11:00 AM, the shadows are, are, you know, pretty drastic. Plants need, obviously, a, a different amount of sunlight than solar panels need to give the appropriate amount of power based on their efficiency. Um, so although you can put a solar system there, again, it's only going to produce 60%, 50% of what it actually would, um, if you put it in a sunny location, and that's why it was cost prohibitive. I'm just trying to, uh, directly respond to a couple of points, sir.
So, so if I look at that photograph, and then there's a small red roof.
Yeah.
That's the shed, correct?
Correct.
So that, that one tree behind it, is that the tree that you, that you took down?
Yeah, to the top left, the northwest, we took that tree down.
It's actually the one in front of them, I think, yeah.
Oh, it's the one right in front, not the one to the left?
No, it's the one in front of them.
Well, it's right here. Yeah, that's the one I'm talking about, yes, okay. That's, because that's where you, I can see the shadow there, okay. All right, thank you for that clarification.
I just want to point out that there, there's significant shading there, and I'd just, I'd just rather go to the source, uh, to, to show that.
All right, um, the other gentleman who wanted to speak, do you mind just stating your name for the record, sir, and your address?
Yeah, uh, Peter, Peter Jepson, uh, I'm at Three Maple Place. I, uh, bought Alex, and, uh, I want to clarify a couple of things. I met Alex when he moved in, uh, greeted him in my yard as a new neighbor, and he told me, oh, I'm going to put solar in, and I didn't, I, I kind of assumed he meant on his house. Well, then, this 60-foot conifer tree, which we adored, uh, that housed many species of birds, uh, I'd seen eagles and hawks on top of it, was summarily chopped down. So, okay. Then, uh, they moved in and erected this steel, uh, structure, and that's when I contacted, uh, Mark Duprell and expressed my concern. And he drove by, he said he would, and he did. And, uh.
He's the building inspector?
Commissioner.
The building commissioner?
Sorry.
Mark Duprell was the building commissioner, that's who you contacted?
Yes. Well, I, I, so, and he sent me a copy of the, the application and, uh, the drawings. And, uh, which, you know, clearly states on the number three, if you look at location of parcel or structure, three, Nine Maple Place located at rear of property. Well, it's not at the rear of the property, and it's signed off by the town stamped. It's not at the rear of the property. It's right on top of me, invades my privacy, and, uh, it affects the value of my home, all the, the, the neighbors that are around. It doesn't fit. It's, it's an eyesore. It's, 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 it's disrespectful, and it's terrible, in my opinion. And, you know, affects my quality of life. I don't know, you know, what, what, what property owner, resident wants to look out at a huge glass panel? I don't. I ask the question. I don't. There's a reason they put these solar panels in remote locations, like off the old dump, down across from the DPW. Nobody wants to look at them. We all love green energy. I do, but I don't want to look out at a, a huge solar panel. I appeal to the board and Alex, rethink this. It's misplaced. It's not right. I mean, we can't bring the tree back or the birds, but this is not the place to put this. And I appreciate you listening to me. Thank you.
You're welcome. Thank you. Is there anyone else who's on the Zoom call who'd like to, uh, give us any further input or questions, comments?
I would like to ask a question for me.
Please.
All right, uh, I have one question that, uh, this gentleman just brought up. When the building commissioner granted the initial permit, which was done erroneously, was the location different than what is being presented to us at this point?
I'm not sure.
Is that a question?
That, that's the first time. That, that's the first time, this is the first time I'm hearing of it, so we haven't had a chance to look into that.
Do you have, do you have a copy of the building permit?
But either way, I mean, town council has advised that the, the issuance of the building permit should have no effect on this special permit process, this is as if it's a, a blank slate. I mean, we all know it's not, it's out there, but from the purposes of this board, um, there was a mistake made, it was an inadvertent oversight, it was a mistake, that'll be dealt with, but, and for this board, you need to look at just the special permit as if it's a new application.
Thank you.
On its own merits. So I don't know that this would really be.
No, I'm just curious if this had been presented to Abadas or anybody else that the location was different.
Can I, can I just chime, can I chime in too, one more time?
Yes, please.
Uh, yeah, but with all respect, but nobody was notified, if we were notified, I mean, I mean, what kind of precedent is this? Can you put like solar panels anywhere you want? I don't know, I'd put a six-foot fence in, I have to go before a board and, I mean, I mean, it's misplaced, it's ill-thought, I mean, it doesn't belong there.
Well, he is here tonight for the purpose of applying for the appropriate special permit for the location of the solar panels. The original permit was not issued by our board and it was issued incorrectly.
So I would respectfully ask the board and my neighbor, Alex, uh, to, you know, consider the impact on this small, tightly-packed neighborhood. It's, you know, it impacts us, value-wise, every, every wise. I've lived here 28 years, okay, so I'm just expressing my opinion and I hope that the board will consider it, thank you.
Yes, please.
Actually, just another question, uh, more for staff than anyone else, uh, and to our knowledge, you probably don't know this now, but in the course of kind of doing your research, is this the first ground mount installation that we know of in residential? Not even R-15?
No, there are, um, ground mounted in R-40s and in fact, that's allowed by right. Um, site plan can be required, you know, if you, so if you need to look at the sensitivity of the site, but in an R-40, obviously larger lots, um, it's a different look. This is, I've only been here five years, uh, I don't know if Gabby has any, but I, this is the first I'm certainly seeing of this. So Gabby doesn't have any recollection of dealing with this in the R-15 district?
This actually is a reasonably sizable lot for R-15, I think it's like seven tenths of an acre.
Yeah.
Just curious.
Yeah.
Anyone else in the audience have anything that they'd like to say, any other questions from the board at this point? Oh, please.
How do I say that?
Please just speak.
Hi, hi, I was wondering how come the permit that was originally agreed upon, that was issued improperly, does it make any difference to this issue, to this hearing?
It does not because it, because it was, it was determined by town council that it was not done with any negligence and that we're, we're supposed to be dealing with this just as if they came in here tonight before they went to the building commissioner and said, this is what, this is what we would like to do and, um, does it meet the criteria and therefore would we give it a special permit in order to go forward to the building inspector?
Does it quite make sense?
I'm sorry?
No, no, um. With that in mind, how, you know, when you make a variance, how, how, if you ask the neighbors their input and now the neighbors are being asked their input after the fact, does that make any difference?
Of course. Yes, I mean, I think it does make a difference, you know, we would take that testimony as if, you know, just if, if it was before the, the, the horse left the barn, we would be taking that testimony, saying, okay, my neighbor says he wants to put it here, but I find it offensive or I find this intrusive or whatever those things may be and even though the board has set criteria that we have to, that we have to do in order to, in order to say that it deserves a special permit, we certainly would be sensitive to hearing what, you know, uh, people in the neighborhood would have to say about it. Um, I don't think that we would be able to just deny it, um, out of hand because someone just doesn't like solar, but we might have some, we might have some, some opportunity to say, well, I know where you want to put it, but can you consider putting it in this corner or can you consider removing some trees in order to get the light you want, Mr. Olinsky, or whatever those items might have been. So.
But to clarify, if the special permit is not granted by the planning board, this solar array will not be able to remain in that location. So this was a mistake made, I don't know how that will happen, I don't, you know, I assume there will actually be appeals, I, I don't know how it will play out, it's, and that's very, made very clear that this board isn't to worry about it. My understanding is a building commissioner can annul a, annul a building permit if they determine it was done mistakenly, so I don't know how that process will play out, but be assured that if this permit isn't granted, then as far as the town's approved, considered, uh, they, it will not be allowed, the solar is not allowed. So it's not like they can put, everybody can just throw one up and then get forgiveness later, the board is considering it on its merits and will, if they vote yes, then it will be able to stay, but if they vote no, it technically won't be able to stay and then that'll start a whole process of how not to have it there. So, this is not moot.
Hi, this is Harrison Gale Kagan and we, uh, we live immediately across the street from Alex, who I think is a, is a fine guy and fundamentally, I think, you know, it's a, it's a fine project. The, the issue obviously is in the execution and, uh, all things being equal, uh, it would have been nicer if it was further back. Um, given what you've just said, um, if this project isn't approved, it doesn't negate the project in and of itself, this could still go forward if it's relocated, is that correct?
Only if the planning board approves the, approves it, I mean.
It would have to come back for, for, you know.
If it were in the backyard, and I don't think anybody would be disapproving it.
And I, and I would argue that.
I don't know.
Relocation, the relocation process, um, is not cheap and it would put us severely over budget and in, in addition to that, it also would not provide the same amount of power. Um, so therefore, if it was to be relocated, it's very likely, um, that the project would just not occur, um, at all.
What's, what's the lifespan of the system?
So the, the panels themselves and all the components are warranted for 25 years.
25.
Um, so there are appropriate warranties, production guarantees, et cetera, uh, that guarantee the system will operate and produce power for at least 25 years. We expect it to be longer than that, but that's the warranty.
And, and understanding that there may be variations and, and some differences based on location or climate or whatever, what's the anticipated payback?
Roughly, um, off the top of my head, roughly seven years if I had to guess, um, maybe six years, that doesn't account for, uh, interest on the financing. Um, so if you, if you incorporate the interest, you're probably looking at maybe a 10-year payback, um, again, kind of shooting from the hip on those numbers. Um, but raw without incorporating any, any interest, um, is about probably six years. Another factor in this is, for those people that don't know, um, when you do solar, when you own the system, you get a, a federal tax rebate, a tax credit, okay, that comes back to you when you do, uh, your taxes, right? And that, that is relatively time-sensitive, you know, if you're going to get a tax credit for 2020, that financial transaction, that project needs to be complete in 2020. Um, you know, there's a reason why this panel's not on that system right now, it's because when we received our stop work order, we pulled off and we said, hey, you know, this is not happening, but I would like to, to, to note that by now going through this process, uh, the Olinsky family is going to lose roughly $2,500 in a, in their federal tax credit because it's, it's decreasing next year. So it is just a, a point, uh, to make. Again, probably doesn't fall into your, your, uh, so-called bylaws and your, your points that you were making, um, but it's, it's part of the equation. And, and again, relocating it, losing some of that tax credit and having less power producing, again, would probably compile to make the project, um, not, not occur, I would probably not do it if it was.
Who's speaking?
If it was my project.
The, the applicant's representative from the solar company is speaking.
Brad Camille from Isaacson Solar.
Thank you.
And again, um, we're trying to do everything by the book, again, that's the reason why the panels are, are not on this system, that's why it looks as rough as it, as it does right now because it's just a skeleton, it's not complete. Um, you know, we, we received that stop work order, we immediately pulled off, we want to do everything by the book and take everything into accordance, um, we do not do unpermitted work, we do not shoot.
This, we understand it's with accordance, but I go back to the permit and line three, if you read the permit, says located behind the house, signed by the town, okay? It's not behind the house, it's in the front yard of the house on the side yard and affects me and my neighbors.
Sir, that permit is null and void. That permit.
Is null and void.
Yes, it is. They are here in front of us tonight applying for a special permit for the facility. The permit that you're referring to is no longer in effect.
I have a question.
Yes, please, just state your name, sir.
Uh, Rick Jakes, I live at 6 Maple Place, directly across the street. Uh, was this project built on the basis of the permission from the original permit, even though this permit's null and void? Would they have gone forward with it if this, if they didn't have that originally, uh, permit?
Well, the permit, the permit, the permit was, was, was issued by the building department, um, based on the fact that they, that they did not realize that there were further, that there was further criteria, i.e. the special permit that needed to be granted.
I, I understand that part, but that doesn't, they, they still built it on the fact the town gave them some sort of approval to go ahead and build this.
Yes, they did.
They wouldn't have built, right, so it seems to me that this kind of falls in the town to originally, to say, you know, we made the mistake, that they should have never got this permit. I don't, you know, it's kind of unacceptable to me that the left hand of the town doesn't know what the right hand of the town's doing as far as the building permits. And I'm sure the, uh, Brad would agree that they wouldn't have built this if they didn't have some sort of permission. So I don't know what the liability actually for moving this would end up falling in the town somehow.
Um, I think the town council would tell you that they have the right to appeal and, you know, that, that, that does not affect this board, it just doesn't.
I understand that part, but it does affect, like I look out my window now and I see a solar field, it's, this isn't small, whatever Brad was saying, it's not small, it's 12 feet tall, it's, you know, it's, it's as big as the, uh, you know, the height of the garage, uh, it's an eyesore. And, you know, I met Alex, nice people, I'm all for solar, uh, power and I agree with the Kagens, that the issue isn't the solar, it's that it's the placement of it. And the original permit, even though it's null and void, we all get that, said the rear of the property, it didn't say anything about the side of the property. And this, this thing is ugly, no way you can put around it, I, I don't know if you, you know, you can't put lipstick on a pig and put some, uh, couple of bushes around it and say that's going to take care of it. Uh, it's just, you know, it's, it, in reality, they wouldn't have built this if the town didn't make a mistake.
Okay, thank you for your input.
Wanting to move this along? I apologize.
Are you here for another hearing?
We are, yes.
Yeah, well, okay.
Yeah, the other one's not even a hearing, so.
And that one will be longer than this one.
Well, please understand one thing, sir, on the, on the one that you're referring to, there is a maximum capacity of this room of 15 at this point in time, okay?
And we are all aware of that.
And we'll come in and out as necessary to give you testimony to hear the problem.
Okay, and that, and that's fine and I appreciate your input, but this is the hearing on the table right now.
Oh, I'd love to have input on this hearing because I happen to love solar and I think it's important and it's really sad to me that I hear this, not in my backyard stuff, from people claiming they like solar and everything else and claiming the trees are being taken down, a person has a right on their property to take down every single tree and not get a permit for anything.
That's true, but do you want to state your name for the record?
Mrs. Selby, 13 Baker Street.
Thank you very much, Mrs. Selby.
This, this kind of strange and, and I heard this too, I think we're R-15, we're looking at doing solar mounts and we're in a historic district, so I can't even put it on the roof because it could be seen from the street, so I have to go to the backside because of historic issues. They're not in a historic district, they have a garage, an unattractive garage, sitting on a driveway, they're putting in something next to it that actually helps the environment and helps that family and they're sitting here saying, well, we don't like it, we think it's ugly. He could build the ugliest sculpture in the world and put it in his front yard, he doesn't need a permit for that and they can't do anything about that. That seems like a terrible criteria.
Excuse me, Kevin, she's got to go to a mic if she's going to continue.
Oh, I'm sorry.
They can't hear you.
You honestly can't hear me?
No, we can't.
They're being told.
The people out there can.
This is being told.
That's all right, I mean, you know.
I don't believe individuals, peoples' aesthetic belief about what is or isn't attractive in a structure should be a deciding factor for a board on whether something adds value to a neighborhood when it comes to solar green energy. We don't have enough of it? This state is 30% more expensive than any other part of the country when it comes to electricity and when you have families saying they can't afford to live in houses because it costs too much to live there and they're trying to use state and federal programs to put in heat pumps and other things that get them rebates so that they can actually afford these homes, we should be encouraging that, not preventing it.
I'd, I'd like to chime in on that and how much oxygen, oxygen do you think a, a tree that big and that all feeds to, to the environment?
He can take down that tree anytime.
A lot.
That tree is not within their purview to decide. He could take down every tree and put it in a different position.
I understand, I understand that, I understand that, but you were making the argument that the solar panel, which was made from steel and glass and, you know, it's, fine, green energy's great, but to rip down a tree, a beautiful old tree, 60-foot tree, shameful.
So to put it where you would like it and just looking at the overview that Brad put up there, to put it where you would like it would mean he would take out what it looked like to me about eight to 10 trees.
I don't want to put it anywhere, I'm just saying they, they had found a beautiful tree.
Right, but you don't get the choice to say they shouldn't have clean energy because you don't like it.
Well, I have a choice because I'm on this meeting.
So am I.
Okay.
Right.
Thank you both for your input.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
I would like to also note for the record, Isaacson Solar has a policy that for every tree we take down, we plant three in its place and a size, a system that is this size.
Yeah, and it takes 80 years to grow them.
Of, over the course of a year, um, produces, um, the equivalent of 149 trees and what that prevents. But this is not a debate, this is.
Right.
Correct.
A planning board meeting.
I think the question is, uh, given what's happening here tonight, um, are we prepared to actually try to push through for a, you know, a decision on this or just, you know, hold it over or maybe even have, when's our next meeting?
January 14.
Oh, jeez.
I think that could be up, up to the applicant, if he wants to push it through, there's only four members here. He needs a unanimous vote if he wants to, wants a decision tonight.
Up to you, Mr. Olinsky.
Yeah, Mr. Olinsky, it's his home.
It's up to you, huh?
So just to clarify, the reason why this matters is, so, under a special permit, a super majority is required, that means four out of five members of the planning board have to approve, would have to vote to approve in order for it to pass. Um, under the state law, a member who misses one meeting is allowed to, um, watch the video or listen to a transcript and then we call it Mullins in, so our, our missing member, Tracy, or an associate member, John, could actually Mullins in and then you'd have five, five people to vote. So that is usually an option that planning boards throughout the state offer an applicant when you're dealing with only four members of whether you want to sort of proceed at your own risk with a unanimous vote.
So if we do that now, then that fifth member can eventually chime in?
If we continue, right.
If we continue it.
If we continue, but if we do a unanimous vote now, then?
If only three, if only three of us vote for it and one doesn't, it's done.
Um, what are the implications for my savings and such if we push this to January?
Yeah, I'll talk to you.
Is it 10 seconds?
Let's go right ahead.
And I just, from a scheduling perspective to the board, I just want to remind you that a couple of factors. We do have Orchard Place, which is going to take some time. And then we have the Housing Production Plan, which I know, and we technically, I think, need to be quitting this meeting by 9:30.
I agree with that.
So we are, and there's a Patriots game, but that's, that's beside the point. But I'm just saying from a schedule perspective, you know, and Orchard Place is a discussion, not a public hearing. This one is a public hearing.
Right.
So, you know.
So can you just go to the microphone? Sorry.
Getting. While I genuinely would like to, you know, get this out of the way now, you know, you know, I put my life on the line every day. I hope that I, I try to do the right thing. I try to do clean energy, you know. Like this lady said, thank you very much for speaking up for me because I know it was very contentious. And I know, um, Count, Sir Whitehouse, he, he called my solar panel ugly in so many words or.
Well, yeah, not in those words, but yes.
In those words. And I think we might have to push it towards January because I, I get the feeling that some people might be okay with voting in my favor. But, you know, I also get the feeling some people might just, for aesthetic purpose, vote against me. And I'd like, you know, the whole crew to at least.
I think it's wise.
I think you should have a full board.
I think I should have a full board. I mean.
It's a sensitive matter.
I understand it's a sensitive matter. I, I, you know, I'm, like I said, we tried to do the right thing. We tried to do all the paperwork. We, we understand that there's like, you know, some mix-ups. Again, I'm not trying to, you know, harm anyone, but I also would like solar panels. And I, I work hard. You know, I have a mortgage. You know, I bought a house. You know, I, you know, I plan on taking care of my family when they get older in this house. And, you know, I'm going to move my in-laws into the basement and the attic and, you know, refinish it someday because, you know, that's what we do. And, you know, we want to be as, energy as efficient as possible. And my roof is just not designed to hold those solar panels. And I believe that it has to be less than 10 years to have solar panels, not 15, correct? You're the solar panel expert.
It's all based on roof condition.
But generally 15 years is kind of a no, no, no area. Yes. So, I mean, this is the best we could do. Otherwise, we'd have to cut down that whole foresty area and then we'd be contending with another thing. So.
Sure.
Uh, let's just do the, the full board. Again, I, you know, I'm, I'm sorry it doesn't look as nice as you'd like to. I'll try to make it look as nice as possible. And maybe you could consider that for.
January 14th.
What time, Dan? 7:15?
Nothing on until 7:15.
All right. So do I hear a motion to continue the public hearing?
Motion to continue the public hearing.
To January 14th at 7:15 PM. Thank you very much. We, there will not be a further notice, or just make note of that if you want to zoom in at that meeting next time, okay?
Yeah, please be in touch because we have no idea what, what January holds for us. We might all be on Zoom at that point. So, you know, another notice will not go out. So please check with us. But that is the schedule is to continue this to the 7:15 on January 14th.
Thank you, everyone.
Very good. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
That come from you?
You would be pretty good.
Probably from a file, maybe?
Okay, yeah, I think that's.
If it makes you feel any better.
You know, her argument was we should be able to.
Can I get two minutes to hit the men?
You're the boss, man. You, you decide.
The real bosses.
Chop, chop. Poor Gabby's. This is complicated, huh? It's hard to do it on Zoom.
Well, you know.
Not that.
That won't, that won't.
Even on the roof, it doesn't.
No.
So we really need to keep this to like a half hour if we can. I mean, this really no, this is not a binding. I'm going to try to tell Kevin. I'm going to get Kevin to pump up on that.
He was making sausage and broccoli wrap for lunch tomorrow.
Who is? Oh, your daughter-in-law?
Yeah. Send me a, just send me a picture of it. It was wonderful lunch. I'm like, yep.
Good. Wait till they're actually married.
Yes, such a good cook. She was in property management. Now she's doing, working for a company doing virtual tours of condos and rental.
Yeah, we're spread out enough.
It's based on, it's 25 people or as many as you can fit in.
Six foot social distance.
Six foot social distance. That's less. So as long as we're social distancing, I think we're okay.
Obviously you two are an item because you're a lot closer than 6 feet.
So, before we begin, I just want to let everyone understand that this is an informal discussion. It is not a public hearing. It is not a full-blown application. This is an informal discussion that the applicant and his representatives have come before this board to tell us something that they would like us to consider going forward. So the public hearing, the public hearing rules do not apply. We can decide to take input from the people who are in this room, or we can totally not take any input. I'm not suggesting that we'll do that. But I just want you to understand that the rules are not the same as if this was a full-blown application and it was a public hearing. So the other thing I should let you know is, is that I'm sure that many of you are going to want to talk about historic tonight. And frankly, I'm not really sure that that has any bearing on this, on, especially right now during the informal discussion. You know, where this is, is not within the historic district. And so, well, you know, I will play this by ear, but if it becomes a thing where that's all I'm going to hear about is historic, then that discussion will end. All right? And, and when we get to the point, if they do go forward and we do get to a point where it is a full-blown application and those things might come in, then, then you may have opportunities to discuss that in that fashion. So I don't want to waste your time or our time. I just want everybody to be clear on how this goes. I'm going to try to be as sensitive as I can, both to the people in the audience and to the, and it's not even an applicant, and to those who are making the informal, the informal discussion tonight. Okay?
Very good. So Mr. Buckley?
Whenever you're ready.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Good evening. For the record, my name is Bill Buckley from Bay Colony Group, and I'm here with Mr. Lynch, who is the proponent. And so we had our last meeting with the board. We had a informal meeting, discussion. And subsequent to that, we had, we offered a site walk to anybody who wanted to do it. And I personally went around with several members. As a result, and what we did on that site walk was to mark out where the proposed home would go and also to mark out where the proposed lot line would go. So at the last meeting, plan was, we were, we discussed the fact that the, that the property is two parcels, at least according to the deed. And then also according to the assessor's map, it shows it as two parcels. And then, so there was some question about, you know, the, again, the historic district. And so what we did is we said, okay, well, can we put this in the, maintain everything, including the lot line, on just retaining it on that second parcel, what's called parcel two in the deed? And so we did a sketch and a plan showing that. And what I'd like to do is share with you, I've passed it out, but I also have a rendering of it. So this is the, the drawing. The, and you have, you actually have the black and white, which has more detail on it. I'll go into that in a moment. So it has, this is what we showed. It's a little different. If you look over here on the right, the last line, the last time we were here, I think the lot line was a little bit in this direction. So going on to what's called parcel one in the, in the deed. And so what this shows is everything staying on what's called parcel two. You know, we discussed briefly about the roadway. This shows an 18-foot wide pavement right now Orchard Place is in pretty much disrepair. I would say generously, it's 10 or 12 feet wide and pretty torn up. And we've talked to the fire department. We had a discussion with them and asked them what they thought would be acceptable from a public safety point of view. And I know I've already gone over this before, but I'll just quickly run through it. And what they asked for was an 18 feet wide, 18 feet of pavement, and then a hammerhead at the end, some kind of a hammerhead. So they wouldn't have to back down the roadway or the Orchard Place, which is a private way. And so that's what you see here is, you know, we're showing the home with two driveways and a, and a hammerhead at the end. And also, they thought that the fact that there's a hydrant down in front of the lovely building on Main Street was acceptable. So they didn't ask for us to put a hydrant up to the cul-de-sac. So this would be what we would propose for, to come before the board. It would be under the subdivision control law. And so under the subdivision control law, the board has jurisdiction for any new construction of new roadways. The purpose of this would be, of course, to create frontage in order to achieve 100 feet of frontage, which is the requirement in the R-15 zone. So if you look at your plan, which I, has more detail on it, I'm going to actually stop sharing this and go to another one. That's it. So it has a little more detail on it, some topo and stuff. And what I wanted to show you was the setbacks. So here's the building setback lines. In the R-15 zone, it's 25-foot front, 15-foot side, 30-foot rear. And that's what you see here. 25, 15, 15, and 30. And you can see the lot line, which is this dash line. And that's approximately where the parcel two lot line would be. The lot would be, again, approximately 19,000 square feet. And the, the, the minimum required, of course, in this zone is, is 15,000. So what I want to do is, if you look over here on the right and actually on the, you can see in the margin, we have waivers requested. So if you look on the right of the black and white that you have, and the first one is, you know, we made the road width 56 feet instead of 50 feet, just to run it all the way to the property line instead of making it 50. Orchard Place itself is only 25 feet wide. So we couldn't, you know, couldn't match that. We asked for 18 feet, 18 feet of pavement where 20 feet is required. Anything in Foxborough, I think it's six or less is a minimum of 20 feet. But the fire department is okay with 18. As I stated, it's 10 or 12 on a good day. And what we'd be trying to do is save some trees over there on the south side of our Orchard Place, which have some pretty good-sized trees adjacent to the Lovely Brothers building. We would ask that the board waive the requirement that a cul-de-sac be constructed. Typically, a 42-foot diameter cul-de-sac is required. We would not ask for that to be waived, just to have a hammerhead. And we would waive the required, ask for the, waive the requirement for curbing, waive the requirement for a sidewalk. There is no sidewalk on Orchard Place. You physically couldn't build one. It's just not wide enough. And then waive the requirement for street lights and street trees. So it sounds like a lot of waivers, and it is.
It is.
But the, the, this, it's similar to other projects that the board has entertained in the past in the town. And that's what we tried to model ourselves on. So those were the, this was the changes we made and just a brief recap of what we discussed at the last meeting. And open for any comments, questions?
Bill, on the second page of your drawing.
Yes.
You show, you're proposing, you're showing that you could actually do the full cul-de-sac.
Yes. I'll pop that up. This is, this is the colored one. So one of the questions that we've had, and the board has asked in the past, and it's a fair question, is, hey, can you, can you really build this if you had to build it without waivers?
Right.
So what you have here is a 50-foot wide road. Again, we've pushed it as far over to the north as we could. Again, we're not going to match the 25. And the cul-de-sac is a 55-foot radius. The roadway pavement width is 20 feet. The cul-de-sac radius is 42 feet. All of those meet the requirement for a project of this size. The other thing you can build, you could build there is a sidewalk. And when I say build a sidewalk, the sidewalk would be built on that portion of the.
Right.
Thing that is subject to the Subdivision Control Act. It wouldn't be built on Orchard Place, which again, in my opinion, doesn't make much sense. But you could physically do it if, if you wanted to do that. And again, you can push the house in there. Let me stop sharing this color drawing and share the, the white. Again, it has more detail. So let me zoom in on a little bit, give you some idea. So here's the cul-de-sac. And what I've done is I've put the zoning setback lines. It's, it's tight. Everything's tight in there. But that is the exact same building that I showed on the previous one. And to give you some idea of what that is, as I mentioned before, this is the size of the building that was built on Glenwood Ave without, without the garages. So it's, I don't know what those garages are. They were either 20, 24 feet. So this would be the same approximate size. You'd get it in there. It would be tight. Patios, of course, don't meet the setback requirement. The width of it, more than enough frontage. The lot width would be measured 50 feet back. It's 88 feet. And I forget what their requirement is, but I think it's 50 or 67, something like that. But it's more than the minimum required for a lot width requirement. So that's always a question that's asked of us. It doesn't make much sense. We would just meet the minimum requirement setback from the existing building on lot one.
Well, to be fair, Bill, I mean, I don't believe this board has ever approved a subdivision of this nature or any nature that only had the original design. A half, a half a cul-de-sac.
I agree. You're absolutely right.
Right. Right.
So that's the John Rhodes Rule.
Yeah.
Show us that you can do it.
Show us that you can do it, and then we can talk from there. The other, the other issue here is, is, and I don't know how it applies, but it does appear that a substantial portion of the cul-de-sac was actually encroaching on the original lot one.
Yes.
Brings it into the historic district.
Yes.
And I don't know, I'm not well-versed enough in what the bylaw about the historic district says about a roadway being able to be built into that district.
Right. Right. We have looked at it, we've looked at the regulations and the, and the bylaws. And it's our opinion that it does not fall under the purview, would not fall under the bylaw of that regulation. So that's our opinion, and we can go into more detail and maybe bring a, an opinion at a later date. But we believe that it, the way the regulation is written, that it has to, anything being done in the district, in order for it to fall under the district, has to be construed, has to affect the exterior architectural feature of the district, which are, which is defined. And we don't believe that this affects the exterior architectural features of 18 Baker Street, which is, which is in the district, or even this. It would simply be some pavement if we ever had to build this type of cul-de-sac.
Any questions from members of the board?
No, I think if we move forward at some point with a formal application, we'd want to investigate that further. But at this point, I think the historical side of it is really irrelevant at this point.
You know, Kev, I know this is only just a discussion.
Yes.
But, you know, I'm not sure that everybody here might understand what's being done here by showing two plans and, you know, which is a common process for us. Maybe you could just explain a little bit about what's, what's at stake here? Why are we doing two plans and?
So the, we're doing two plans because in the initial, the one that Mr. Kraus and Mr. Selby attended the last time, that was, that was submitted. And we had questions about whether we thought that that was acceptable, legitimate, however you want to call that, even for discussion purposes. Because as I mentioned earlier, the history of the board is that we have never approved a, a hammerhead of that nature unless you could show that you could build the full cul-de-sac. And I think that that led Mr. Buckley and Mr. Lynch to come back and say, let us show you how we could accomplish that. And, but it does change, it, it does make a, a big change to their, their initial discussion plan. The location of the building is different, and it, it, in order to get that cul-de-sac in there, it, it does remove a portion of lot one in order to affect the construction of that specific cul-de-sac, for them to prove their point that it could be done.
And it could be done in conformance with the town's subdivision rules and regulations.
Correct. It could be done within conformance.
With waivers?
No.
No, without.
So that's, this happens often, not often, but from time to time, that an applicant would come in seeking waivers, and from the town's point of view, or from the board's point of view, we would be suggesting that, well, this project might be less intrusive by granting waivers, less destructive to the topography, less intrusive into the neighborhood. But typically, we would not go there if we didn't know for sure it could be built by conventional means, in accordance with the subdivision rules and regulations.
Right.
And when Mr. Buckley presented the subdivision, the full cul-de-sac version, did he not say that there were still waivers required because of the length of the street and the width of the street?
I'll let Mr. Buckley answer that.
No, there's no waivers required because the only portion, the only portion that falls under the jurisdiction of the planning board is the new piece. So the new, the 25-foot wide existing road is in existence, and the board, in my opinion, has no jurisdiction over it. It's a public safety issue, which I think we've addressed by discussions with the public safety department. But the new section of roadway is 50 feet wide, with a 55-foot cul-de-sac, with a 20 feet of pavement, with a 42-foot radius cul-de-sac, which meets the town standard.
So the purpose of the informal discussion process is just for the applicant to get, you know, he, he or she has an idea, and they say, here's what we'd like to, you guys to consider before we go spending money on full-blown engineering and bringing it as a full-blown application. So we do these frequently, for all kinds of small things and even larger things than this. And generally speaking, we found it's a very good process because it doesn't waste a lot of time and money. You know, they get, they get an idea right away if they think that the board will even give a consideration, or not so much. So then they'll either come back with something else that they know will be appropriate or more appropriate, and do the application, or they may just walk away and say, we can't make it work, either for money reasons, or time reasons, or whatever those may be. So I think that's as good an explanation as I can give.
Mr. Chairman, in order to, since you know I'm trying to save time, since we have an important housing meeting after this, and I don't want to be cut off, I, I do think that, when I think of this historic district, so the, the straight face plan, as we call it, it has to pass the straight face plan. Let's imagine that portion of the historic district is wetlands. The board would not approve it without knowing for sure that a road would be allowed to be built on those wetlands. So maybe the next step is, rather than, because we all know what everybody's going to say, and kind of where this is all going, maybe the next step is, before the board even makes any decision, to find out whether this road could be built in that historic district. I know what Bill's saying, but I mean, there's also a section, and I'm not arguing that it applies, but I just don't know that where its exclusions, and it says, "The commission shall exclude from its purview the following." And under number two, it says terraces, walks, sidewalks, similar structures, but not including driveways and/or parking lots. It doesn't mention roads, so we don't know. But maybe the prudent thing to do, to be most efficient, is to figure out if that's a deal breaker. Because if that's the case, then without historic commission approval, that road wouldn't pass the straight face test. You know, and if it does, we learn that it is not applicable, and that it has no bearing over it, then that's information for the board to consider in determining whether it would pass the so-called straight face test. So that kind of cuts to the, the root of it all at this point. When it wasn't in the historic district, it was kind of, your hands are tied, and you're, not hands are tied, but you're back to your age-old question.
We still have plenty of jurisdiction.
Yeah, but, and you, but you're kind of back to a similar situation that Jeff was describing, where sometimes the town does give waivers just to avoid these large cul-de-sacs to be built in areas that really would be disruptive. We don't know yet whether that's the case here, whether this could actually be built. And I think that's just really the only question on the table right now. Regardless of how everybody feels, the question is kind of be done.
I just wanted to make sure that everybody understood what this process is all about.
There, there is a second question on the table, too, and I appreciate Paige bringing that up because.
Can I just, for protocol here, the person who speaks needs to be at a microphone, needs to be addressed by the chairman, and needs to identify themselves. So I just want to be clear, because we have a lot of people here, and if you keep talking from the audience, Paul's can't get it, and it can get mayhem.
If you want to speak, just come up, say your name and address again, and then you can speak your piece about the second item.
Better, Paul?
Much better.
There we go.
Trish Selby, 13 Baker Street. I am on the historic district commission. Two of the other members on the historic district commission are here with me in person, and one is on Zoom. We just can't see them because of screen sharing. We all believe there are a lot of issues for the historic district to be looking at if, in fact, they are trying to use any portion of 18 Baker Street's lot in order to get to either by waiver or by what you guys call the straight face build, in order to build something there. We've also had lots of conversations with lots of neighbors, which is why this room is as full as it is. And there is a secondary issue, which is, it is not, it is not the belief of some people that there actually is a right-of-way in existence right now. So I know that they got a lawyer letter from Mr. Lovely saying, this driveway, this parking space that's there in the middle of the right-of-way, which is 8 Orchard Place's parking space, that that's not going to get adverse possession because it was created in 2002. It was turned into a condo in 2002, it was created long before that. So there is, there is a factual question here of whether that right-of-way has been extinguished well over 20 years ago. We have the owner for 8 Orchard Place and the tenant, which is her daughter of 8 Orchard Place, both here, both very upset to find out that they don't, in fact, own the parking space that is their exclusive use under the master plan. They didn't know that. So all of the neighbors have gotten together, all of the neighbors have been having this conversation among themselves, and it's a bit of an echo chamber, because none of us know what the planning board is intending to do. And of course, this is not yet an application. So it doesn't matter, the fact that we've talked to Mr. Gellerman and said, do we need counsel? What do we do? We've said, do we need to talk to town council, as the historic district? What do we do? We think bad things are about to happen. So rather than everyone getting up here and repeating.
Yeah.
We are really afraid of this. We need to know what the process is, and we want everyone to be completely transparent about the fact that there is no one in our neighborhood who believes that any kind of two-family home on this lot would be appropriate in the neighborhood, historic district or not.
So the one question I have to you, not so much about the adverse possession, but how does that, and, and I'm not an attorney, so you'd have to speak to an attorney about this.
Sure.
How does that impact the fact that in the deed?
Uh-huh.
It says that they have the right to, to, to travel that way?
It says they have a right-of-way. It's a type of easement. And, and I'm sure that Mr. Lynch's attorney, Mr. Lovely, if he were here, would say, would explain to you what that right-of-way easement is. There are many, many cases in Massachusetts about how you lose an easement. There are many cases about how you don't lose an easement. And I mean, there are, there are as many cases as there are cows and trucks and hay fields and everything else that, that has ever tried to have an easement and a right-of-way. But that right-of-way was for ingress and egress. It does not mean you can take away the trees and the landscaping and the driveway, because this is, in the end, a private road owned by Six and Eight Orchard Place jointly. It doesn't mean you can take that away and turn it into something completely different. I would argue that a subdivision cul-de-sac is something completely different than what exists right now, which is a gate on the back of a fence that would have allowed ingress and egress from that lot. I don't know what that will end up being. And if Mr. Lynch decides he wants to build on it, and the owner at 8 Orchard Place says, I'm going to defend what I thought I bought when I bought, because they didn't know about that right-of-way, then they end up in litigation over the thing for lord knows how long in this town. But there, there are so many different moving parts going on right now, and so many different neighbors who are very concerned that they are going to see a repeat of other things that have happened on Baker Street when nobody said anything, that there is a great deal of anxiety building up within both the Bentwood neighborhood and the Baker Street neighborhood, all of whom view this backyard space.
Okay. Thank you.
So I think that, that's a really good point, and I think you could add that to your list of, you know, things that if, could, well, you could also give an input, you know, now on that, too. But if you wanted to keep this going, then I think that would be an important thing, is to make sure that they have the rights to that right-of-way, and that what they're proposing, they'd be allowed to do in addition to the historic clarification.
Right.
I agree with that.
Thank you.
Thank you for your input. Yes, Mr. Kraus?
Yes, sir.
We've got five more minutes.
Tom Kraus, 9 Baker Street. The one thing that hasn't been talked about is, in talking to Mr. Gillerman, he mentioned that a perk test was done on the property when he was the owner, and it failed. So I just wanted to.
He would be the only one who would have knowledge of that, other than the board of health.
Well, I just told all you guys.
Yeah.
Thanks.
But, but just so you know, you know, unless we see evidence of that, then that's just hearsay. That's hearsay for right now.
Well, and again, subdivision control can't pass without board of health approval. So this, a failed perk test would kill the project. So it's.
Well, if you're trying to save money, you should do it earlier rather than do all the engineering process right up.
Yes, ma'am.
I'd love to speak.
Please do.
I introduce myself to everyone. Some people know me here. I'm Ellen Samson, and I live at 8 Orchard Place. And I have had possession of this house for two years. My daughter, who's in back of me, is Elizabeth, and she lives there. And it was my understanding when I bought the property that not only did I have a place to park, or she had a place to park, but there's also a shed, which is in back of, in front of the fence. I feel very concerned that if projects develop that we are having people pass through with traffic, and I no longer have a parking space, and I no longer have a place for a shed, that will impact my quality of life, living in this property. And where else am I going to put my car? Our cars, if I have a guest? So therefore, I'm just speaking to the people at this table who have made their points and drawn up their plans, that I am concerned for my rights. As a, as a resident of Foxborough, and as someone who bought this house, because I like old houses, and it goes back to Mr. Fowles, who originally had the house, and it was a stable, and it was relocated from Main Street down to this one house on Orchard Place where Elizabeth Samson and Jean Cameron and Brian Cameron live. They live at 6 Orchard Place. So I wa, I would be concerned that those things, those concerns, those personal concerns, be part of this knowledge going forward with whatever comes, comes to the next sessions that will, I'm sure, ensue.
Okay. Thank you very much.
Welcome.
Anybody else have anything else they'd like to say for tonight? So I think we need to take a look at some of those issues that Paige brought up, get some more information.
I guess my question, Mr. Chairman, is, is who's gonna, so how do we proceed? Who is going to look at these issues? How would you like us to move forward?
It's not us. It's not us. It's the applicant to make choice.
Right.
He has those rights, not us.
So that's the question is, is, you know, it's like, we want to look at these things. Okay. So do you want me to have our attorney give you his opinion? How would you, how do you want to do it? That's my question. Because, you know, it's not unusual, you have, it's not unusual, you just have, you have a disagreement, it's a private disagreement, off-site, actually. So in my opinion, that would be between Mr. Lynch and the neighbor on that issue. But as far as the issue of the encroachment of the by right or proof plan into the historic district, how do you want to proceed with that?
I mean, I think, you know, if you would like, if you want your, if you want your attorney to, to venture an opinion, you're welcome to do that. I mean, you know, and the other items that Paige mentioned, I mean, if you want him to, to comment on those as well, I mean, we, I don't know if we want to.
Well, to clarify, I don't think we'd get involved in the issue between eight and that. I think the, what the planning board's looking at is whether there's actually adequate access to the site, you know, whether that right-of-way is going to allow the right, the, the upgrades enough to deem the, the access along Orchard Place to be sufficient. The only way for it to be sufficient is obviously for them to have the rights to improve, that's been mentioned, that maybe they don't have it. So I think it would be incumbent on the applicant to submit, you know, legal opinions and their findings, and then we'd have to have our attorney fact-check that.
Exactly.
So kind of have them do the legwork on both of those. Again, the prescriptive easement stuff, that's, that I think, believe is civil, but I do think your purview is whether they have the right to upgrade that road and, or the right-of-way and, a private way, and then whether, because that's providing vital access to the cul-de-sac, which is, is totally in your purview. So I think that's sort of where it's at.
Okay. Yep, that makes sense. So we'll have, we'll, we'll prepare that, and we'll come back.
Or you could just say that you're, you know, it doesn't, sometimes waivers aren't needed, and, you know, have them build the full cul-de-sac. I mean, that's kind of the, always, you know, I always tell you guys to call the bluff. So you could always do that, but the risk of that is that a full cul-de-sac would be built. So I don't, but that's, that's kind of always the threat. And you know how I feel about them, but sometimes, you know, the other thing is we're kicking this down the curb. We're having them spend more money on legal fees on the, and so, and if the board was against or leaning against it, it might be nice to put it out of its misery. So, but if you need the information, you need it and that's fine.
Well Paige, I think either way, we need the information because if they would decide to go with the full cul-de-sac, that encroaches on the historical land. So that needs to be clarified. And if that's the case and we don't decide to grant waivers and they want to move forward, then they can do it by right. But I think that the answer should be, unless Mr. Buckley says, you know, we want to fold.
No, I, I think, I think it's a good next step. We should do that and we should investigate. We, the whole purpose of these informal meetings is to do this.
Yes, exactly.
Flesh out all these issues, get them out front, and we make a decision whether, so it's not, you know, I have no problem with moving forward as you discuss. It's a good way forward.
Let's do that, though.
January fourteenth?
Can't wait.
Well, let's just,
That was a question.
I don't know that we should schedule it because we don't know what the town council, like, we don't know when we'd be getting the letter and then it has to go to our town council. So.
We'll wait till, it's, it's informal, so we don't need advertising. If we're ready, we'll, we'll get with the staff and get it organized.
Right.
And if you guys want to make sure, you know, make sure we have a point of contact to get, if we could just get ahold of one or two of you and then spread the word, that would be helpful because this isn't a public hearing and we do want to make sure you all know about it. If it's anytime in January or February, there's a good chance we're going to end up on Zoom. I don't know how many, how much longer we're going to be allowed to do this. So feel free to check in with us on that, but yeah, it's not a public hearing, so it won't be noticed.
You want me on a mic to talk, right? The people on Zoom are telling me that the chat feature was disabled, so none of them were actually able to give any input by being at Zoom, which was our concern tonight about anyone attending by Zoom was they wouldn't be able to give any input.
Well, I don't know why they can't because the hearing before this, everybody could talk.
The chat feature is disabled, so unless they're speaking, they, so there's, there are two different ways to give comment. One is a chat feature.
So if you want to entertain comments.
I mean, not if they're going to be, I think, I think we should just go where we're going to go tonight.
Right. I don't mean for tonight. I mean, if you're, we're setting another hearing, it is a hearing, and you're wanting us to all be at home at Zoom, there needs to be, for those who aren't comfortable rambling like I do and want to actually write words, they should be able to write the words and have those come in.
Yeah, we're trying to figure this all out and we're all winging this, you know, we don't, we don't know. We just, I'm not comfortable being in this room with this many people. So I'm saying that this is the last time I'll be probably in this setting for a while, but, so we apologize, but I think this isn't a hearing.
Right.
It's a meeting. I think unless there's some new content, I mean, I just, and we have a housing meeting that, and we have to be out of here by nine thirty.
So once, once Mr. Buckley gets back to us and we know what we're doing, we'll make sure we get in contact with the room.
Thank you.
All right, thank you.
Home and tune into the housing meeting on cable.
I don't need more to be here. I know, no. Oh, it goes with this lot? It does. That's the house. This is just a portion of La One. So this is where they live. This is where the Byrins lived. That's, that's Gellerman's. I don't know. Hey, Billy, come here. So I can't believe I didn't pick up on this before. Now I'm confused. So this is where the Byrins lived, but you have it here. Now we're formally the Byrins.
This is eighteen. This is where Gellerman used to live.
Yeah, that's it.
That's wrong.
That's wrong. That belongs there. She's insulted.
We have a couple people on Zoom.
Related to this? That are related to this?
Yeah.
Are they part of the people who put it together or part of people who want to comment?
They might want to comment.
Okay, that's fine.
Yeah. I know, the mask, it doesn't.
Okay. It being sometime after seven forty-five PM, the housing production plan presentation will commence.
Thank you.
You're very welcome.
Okay, so thank you all. The reason for being here tonight is to let the viewing public, because I know the planning board already knows this, but really to publicly let folks know that the housing production plan is available in draft form. I have with me tonight on the Zoom screen, John McMartin. He is the MAPC consultant. He'll be making a brief presentation after me. But just by way of history, I have some notes here because since the housing production plan was released in draft form, we've already started getting some comments. And we did have a meeting with the Board of Selectmen, and so we got a few comments then. So I've kind of made a few remarks to try to address some of those in hopes that they'll keep this conversation moving and maybe answer some questions. So a lot of folks weren't aware that there was a housing production plan issued by the town of Foxborough in 2012. That plan has since expired, but it is available on the planning board website if anybody wants to go visit it. The focus of that plan in 2012 was to achieve safe harbor, which is basically means when the town either meets ten percent of the affordable housing inventory or produces enough units each year to get safe harbor. So if, if in your housing production plan, you say you're going to create X number of, of units each year and you do that, then you're protected from the quote-unquote threat of forty B. That's what was the whole purpose of the 2012 plan. We were under ten percent and the town was vulnerable to developer-driven forty Bs. Since that time, we have achieved the ten percent. And that is, is actually awesome, except, and the perspective of the planner is it's good because it checks off a list. We're no longer vulnerable to the developer-driven forty Bs. But when we dug in a little deeper and, you know, I've been here now five years and we, I hear from a lot of mostly seniors, I thought I'd take a look at the numbers. So there are eight hundred fifty-nine SHI, that's the way it's called, subsidized housing units in Foxborough. These are the so-called affordable units. Four hundred ninety-eight of that eight hundred fifty-nine are at the Lodge and the Sylvan over by ninety-five. So that just puts it into perspective, like when you, you know, we do, it's great. We've checked off the ten percent and we.
We're greater than ten percent, are we not?
Yeah, we're twelve point five percent. But, so eight hundred fifty-nine SHI units are on the books and four hundred ninety-eight of those are at the Lodge and Sylvan. Now, only a hundred twenty-five of the units at the Lodge and Sylvan are actually affordable, although I don't know how affordable that really is, but only, yeah, only a hundred twenty-five are. But under the laws, the forty B laws, all units in an apartment complex count towards the SHI even when they're not affordable. So that's, I just wanted to make that distinction because folks kind of say, well, we hit twelve and a half percent. We're doing great. And we are on one measure, but we're still seeing housing need. Because we're back down to, well, let's see, it's three hundred sixty-one units if you take out the Sylvan and Lodge, but if you add their one twenty-five, we're at four hundred eighty-six. So basically, four hundred eighty-six out of six thousand eight hundred fifty-three units are considered affordable when you don't count the Sylvan and the Lodge non-affordable units. So that just puts it into perspective of like why there's still a need, even though we've checked a box.
But those six thousand plus units include single-family homes and duplexes, correct?
Yes, yes. Yeah, that's all the housing units. Six eight, six eight five three are the, well, is, was the measure of the full housing units. Four hundred eighty-six are affordable, not right now, you know, according to the last measure.
But of those forty-six, those all would be almost by definition rental units, wouldn't they? Yes. Because we have no way of measuring, or I assume there's no way.
Some, some units are, like Wyman Village is, is a forty B and those homeownership units do count on our SHI.
But in terms of any single site, you know, single-family scattered site housing, just normal, we have no way of knowing.
No, we don't. And those aren't, and those aren't capital A affordable, you know. The only affordable ones we have are, you know.
Does that, does that include senior housing?
Yes. Yes, does include all the senior housing. So the question's been asked, why if we're over ten percent, do we even do a housing production plan? We technically don't need certification because we're not looking for that annual number to achieve. And the reason is, the numbers I just told you, is that I've heard from mostly seniors, but I don't want to gloss over the fact that there are other folks that aren't necessarily seniors who have expressed a need for a different type of housing in town. But those numbers are the reason why, you know, is there is still a housing need even though we've checked off the ten percent box. So that's why we're looking at this plan. Another point I want to make is that many of the strategies and the plans are specifically in there to help the seniors. I've heard the comment that this is a builder-friendly plan. And I, I'm sad to hear that because in reality, this plan was written directly to try to achieve what the seniors and others, but mostly the seniors, have asked for. For example, accessory dwelling units. You know, I don't know that that's developer-friendly or not, and that's, that's to allow folks to live in a second unit attached to a single-family home. One of the two units would need to be occupied by the homeowner. So it's not a true multifamily. It's not a true rental situation. You're always going to have the homeowner there to monitor that and to manage it.
So, so under the definition of the ADU in the plan, does it have to be attached?
It, well, no. In the plan, it doesn't really specify one way or another, but it would be more flexible if it wasn't attached. The proposal you saw a few months ago did not include detached. Because listen, we're, we want to do this in baby steps. We're not trying to change the character of the community. We're not trying to overwhelm the community. I understand zoning is, is, is challenging, so. But I want to, I don't want to, I want to make sure I leave time for John to speak. So I want to point out that accessory dwelling units are in there. The Walnut Street site was in there. That's another major project that would do it. Again, that's not developer-friendly. That is going to actually truly meet the needs and it's something that we're working on with the Housing Authority. And we, we hope to have some exciting news in that to announce in the next few weeks. And then thirdly, the cottage and the forty R zoning seem to be the most contentious. And I understand that, but I also want to point out that these are just recommendations and they will not go into effect if this plan is approved. It's to keep the conversation going. Now, why are we even talking about either forty R, which I want to make very clear is not forty B? Forty R is completely locally controlled. Town meeting would have to approve any forty R district. Cottage zoning, that would require town meeting votes. So all of these things would take a lot more effort and a lot more review and discussion before they even got to consideration. The reason we're doing these is that we've learned that the market is not going to build smaller houses. And that's what the seniors who are living in these larger homes scattered throughout town are looking for. They're looking for a way to downsize while staying in the town. That's not going to happen naturally. We also know that the residents don't want to subsidize this. You know, it's not like the town is going to go out and build housing developments. I mean, Walnut Street aside, because that's a housing authority, that's a different animal. But generally speaking, the town of Foxborough is not going to subsidize a cottage development. So the only way it's going to happen is if the market does it. The only way the market is going to do it is if there's some sort of gentle density. That's the term I want to use. I know it sounds scary, but again, it would only be in small areas of the town. It's not something that would be approved town-wide. It's not something that would overtake the R forty. These would be defined areas that the town would decide on in the future, not as part of this housing production plan. So I just want to, you know, sort of calm any fears about that. It's not looking for overwhelming density. It's not looking to change R forty. It's not looking to change the character. It's looking at defined areas, maybe near transit, maybe in the growth note areas where you could support a modest amount of density. Because I don't think we're talking about thousands of units here or even hundreds. I think a handful of units to start, you know, to let the seniors move is probably it. I don't think we have hundreds of seniors looking to do this all at once. So again, I, I think it's a, you know, if you combine accessory dwelling units and the Walnut Street and then maybe a few little pockets, you might be in much better shape without a major change. The other point I've heard is that they want to know sort of how things have worked in the past, and I understand that, and other, other housing production plans, and we're going to work on that information. But I also want to point out that this plan is very unique to Foxborough. It specifically was not done as one of the MAPC, you know, plans that like you'd take off a shelf and just put in the name Foxborough. We, we specifically tailored all the strategies to Foxborough. So, and lastly, nothing in this plan commits the town to spending money. I've heard loud and clear that's a concern of the residents, that they don't want this affordable housing effort or change of housing effort to end up putting a burden on town services or the town's taxpayers. And we hear that. This is really just to continue the discussion and to start looking at defined ways we can help our seniors and others stay in town, downsize, upsize, whatnot, have, you know, students or, you know, young adults stay in town. So that's what this is, is going for. And the reason I've been fighting for seniors mostly is because they're the ones knocking at my door all the time. They're the most vocal ones. I have a letter here that I could read. I'm not, she's not even a senior, but I have a letter from one of the longtime residents who's basically saying, I can't find a place to live in town. We have another letter from the Council on Aging, the chairwoman of that. So we do have support. I'm going to pass this over to John because I don't want to take up too much time. But I did want to set that stage of, because we're hearing a lot of comments. And I hope people don't just give up on this effort. Let's keep this conversation going. John, are you ready to take over?
Unmute.
Oh, you gotta unmute?
I'm, can you hear me now?
Oh, boy.
Nope.
There we go.
We got you. How about, how about now? All good?
All good.
Great. All right, so thank you. I'm John McMartin. I am a planner with MAPC on the housing team. So that's the regional planning agency for the Greater Boston region, of which Foxborough is a part. I'm going to share my screen real quick. I'll try to fly through this presentation, being cognizant of the time here. All right, how's that looking?
Good.
Good.
Great. Just one sec. All right. So I'm, I'm going to skip a lot of the intro here because it's nine ten. But, and Paige, you know, teed this up brilliantly. I want to, I want to thank Paige and Gabby and, you know, really everyone in the town who's helped put this together. It's been a thirteen-month effort thus far. You know, we really did our kickoff day in, in November of last year. So it's, it's been a journey to get here and I think we've come up with something that's like really tailored to Foxborough and really meets the needs of the, the community that we spoke with. So a housing production plan is a plan that's supposed to guide development in the future. So it's really about a community taking control of, of their destiny, of their future. There's several required components. I'm really going to be focused in on the, the goals and the strategies, so the specific things that the plan is proposing. But I want to note here, we're not talking about specific, you know, zoning amendments or anything. But I want to note here, we're not talking about specific, you know, zoning amendments or anything at this point. This is, this plan is sort of a statement of intention. So there's a good question about detail, earlier details about the, about accessory apartments that that question was raised. You know, this is a statement of intention. Basically, all of the recommendations call for some sort of specific further study. You know, all, all of these are significant undertakings on their own. So yeah, we started, I guess, really back in September of 19, so it's been longer than that. We've been going through now, we've had several engagement events that you've, I'm sure, been briefed on. But really, you know, starting in the spring, we started talking about strategies in a real way. We, we had a virtual forum on those. We did several meetings with our working group to sort of take this from a universe of, you know, 30 to 40 strategies that could respond to the, to Foxborough's needs and whittle that down to a much smaller, more achievable list. So as Paige mentioned, a lot of what we, we heard from the community and a lot of what's backed up in, in the data analysis is that the community sort of needs these smaller housing options, different housing options to meet the needs of seniors as they're looking to downsize, for young families looking for a starter home, single people, sort of options that are harder to find in Foxborough given its current housing stock. I won't go through all the stats here. There is existing cost burden in town. And, and I want to, I want to highlight this. So cost burden is when you spend more than 30% of your income on housing. That's considered a really unsustainable level. You have, have to start making hard choices. One in five, almost one in four owners are cost burdened. Nearly half of renters are, and 40% of senior households are. So this is a, a real, you know, thing out in the community today. People are paying more than they ought to for housing or really can pay for housing. As noted before, Foxborough has 12.5% units on the subsidized housing inventory. That's the state list. Those are capital A, capital H affordable units, or at least some of them are. Paige noted the sort of regulatory loophole that gets thrown in there that throws this off. But more important than any sort of affordability, or more than important than any sort of inventory number is like the need in town. You know, this is a, a plan for real people, not sort of trying to chase some, some random metric. So what are the goals we landed on? And these, you know, it was a long time coming and getting to these. It was, you know, sort of months of engagement and then hammering out language with the working group who are, again, residents and stakeholders. Encourage housing production that is unsubsidized but affordable to the typical Foxborough household. So, you know, how do you get the market to create housing that people can afford? Establish a regulatory environment that will enable market conditions to support the creation of varied housing options. So this is related. It's about, you know, creating this regulatory environment, whether it's zoning, some other regulation. Promote a range of housing opportunities accessible to families, those without children, single-income households, first-time home buyers, seniors, and those interested in multi-generational living. So these are all groups we talked to, whether it's at the, the senior center, town hall, in a focus group. You know, we, we spoke to people with sort of different needs. Interestingly, many of those needs, you know, called for the same type of housing, which is maybe something a little bit smaller that gets built today. Encourage deed-restricted affordable housing for low and moderate income households to keep long-term housing affordability consistent with Foxborough's roots and character. So Foxborough and, and the community here, you know, understands its history as being a sort of mixed-income history, a, a place where all people can, can grow up. And so deed-restricted affordable housing, which is more complicated to build, does sort of ensure that some housing is affordable no matter what happens in the market. So sort of this like safety valve. And then maintain balance of housing versus other land uses. I think it's important to the community members we spoke to and certainly us. We're not talking about developing, you know, on every parcel of land everywhere. How do you create a sort of balanced approach? So those are the goals. We looked at 30 to 40 strategies that could meet those goals, looked at the impact they would have on achieving goals, but then also, you know, real fiscal costs of the town. It's no surprise that COVID has done a number on town finances, you know, in Foxborough and anywhere. But sort of how do you, how do you make sure that, you know, we're not trying to burst the budget here? So here's the seven priorities we came up with. And again, this is we, not MAPC, but, you know, town staff, MAPC, members of the working group who are residents, and then sort of also collecting input from, from various groups, including the general public through, you know, virtual forum and sort of paper survey that was offered. So one, redevelop underutilized historic buildings to create new housing options. So here we're talking about sort of vacant historic buildings, some of which are going to be appropriate for housing, not all of them. But, you know, take a look at the historic assets in town. What's going to work for housing? And then this, this is a nice strategy because it takes something that's vacant and, you know, potentially, you know, depressing property values or taking away from the character of town and, and turning it into a real asset. And it, you know, because it's an existing structure, it doesn't necessarily change the character that much. Cottage housing. So this is a type of small housing. We, we discussed this with other small housing types at a community meeting we held in February. But this is a small housing type. It's, it's a single-family home that's built in sort of little clusters around an open space. And it's sort of ideal for downsizing seniors and also young families. So we're saying right zoning and design guidelines for, for this type of housing. Though this, you know, it wouldn't be saying, you know, permit it everywhere. I mean, you know, most likely that's, you know, you'd have to do a study where you would like to see it. There are some, some good spots identified in the plan for, as potential spots. But, you know, you, you would want to go through that process, take a look where it would be appropriate, take a look at what sort of design is appropriate for town. And eventually, you know, this would be writing a zoning amendment, writing design guidelines that would be sort of wrapped into that zoning. And then eventually it'd have to be passed at town meeting. Looking at a smart growth overlay district. So this is a zoning technique. And this is again, getting at those smaller housing types. You know, it's a pretty flexible tool. Some, some, you know, real like city-like places. You can think of places like Haverhill do a more city-oriented thing. But then there's other places that have, you know, very small-scale suburban appropriate housing types that get authorized through a smart growth overlay district. And what's nice here is if, if you're looking to build this sort of smaller, you know, gentle-density type housing, this is something where there is a payment from the, from the Commonwealth, you know, when you pass this. And then for each unit permitted. So it's an incentive by the Commonwealth for communities to allow for smaller housing like this. So it's, it's a, you know, in a context like Foxborough where people are already talking about small housing, where it's something they might want to pursue. This is a way of doing that where you also get some kickback from the Commonwealth. You also get an affordability requirement. I believe it's 20% of units have to be that deed-restricted affordable housing. So it's not like, you know, it creates that mixed-income opportunity that, you know, otherwise would be hard to do. You'd have to come up with some sort of subsidy or, you know, pass a more far-reaching inclusionary zoning thing, which we're not suggesting here. Accessory apartments. So as was mentioned before, Foxborough has an accessory apartment bylaw. It, you know, in terms of the units it's produced, I was taking a look at some of the numbers the other night. It's, you know, not the lowest number produced in towns that have accessory apartment bylaws, but it's certainly not the most. It's kind of somewhere in the middle. There's some other communities that would be interesting to look at for how to, you know, change Foxborough's bylaw. So communities like Situate, Marshfield, they have more production and slightly different rules, but, you know, maybe not the most permissive rules in the world. We're, you know, there was a question asked earlier about sort of the details of this. We're saying, here's some things that you could look at. We're not actually suggesting what changes need to be made yet because we understand it's sort of a, a live issue and, and one that the community will need to discuss. I did watch your hearing on it, was it back in the spring, maybe the summer? All right, five, duplex design guidelines. So duplexes are allowed by right in the R15 zone, as you know. But we heard a lot from the community that the duplexes that were getting built were sort of out of character, not, not sensitive to the existing context, and then, you know, quite expensive. So one way we looked at sort of fixing this problem and bringing duplexes back to it, sort of a, a type that could be accessible to, you know, regular Foxborough folks is through design guidelines that, you know, might help control bulk or, you know, some of the elements you're seeing in the duplexes today that make them more out of character with the existing context. Expand housing authority capacity. So this, you know, this is effectively the Walnut Street site that we're talking about here. It's a great opportunity for the town. I was, I saw Greg Speer on the call earlier. You know, Greg Speer, the rest of the Housing Authority and the town are all working hard to, to make this project a reality. But it's, it's going to take a lift. So we're saying that it's a priority for the town to pursue this. And then lastly, there was a lot of great ideas that we heard from the community that would be great and applicable to Foxborough and, and meet the goals, but they would cost money and sometimes a significant amount of money. Understanding that the, the budget is, you know, it's, it's an open question everywhere right now. We didn't want to say propose those things and, and know they were going to wither on the vine without having a secure funding source. So we're saying Foxborough should explore some funding source. And there's, interestingly, not every town has as many options for funding as Foxborough does. We know in the plan, there's of course the, the meals tax and, and sort of its, its relationship with the Gillette Stadium. Opportunities for commercial development that don't exist in every town. Commercial development being, you know, much more remunerative. Can never say that word right, but much better for the town fiscally. And then we do suggest, you know, taking a look at, at the Community Preservation Act, which is a way to secure funds for housing. We're, we're not saying which one of those three is the best option. We're not saying those are the only options, but those are three good options. The point is to really explore this specifically. Now, we, we have a bunch of other best practices that the town has said, all right, these don't cost anything and they're just good things to do. So they're also in the plan, but they're, they're not listed as priorities since they're less of a lift. Just to note next steps real quick, this is a, a long list of our December engagement. We're right here. And so we, we do have another set of office hours. Those are next week at 6:00 PM, the 16th. And so you have to register, register for those. And you can register, you can find the link to register on our website, mapc.org/foxboroughhousing. All comments on the draft HPP are due by December 18th. So the, the plan is out for public comment right now. You can email those to Paige or drop them off at Town Hall. Eventually, sometime in 2021, we expect some, some version of this plan. We'll go to the Board of Selectmen and you, the planning board for adoption, but the, the timeline is sort of open on that. But that would be, you know, some, sometime in the next year. All right, I'm going to quit sharing my screen. I'm sorry, that was very fast for the content. I had here and hopefully there's some time for comments.
Thank you, John. So that's basically the overview where we are at. I guess if the board has any questions and anything specific.
I'll be getting my comments.
You're going to get my, all right. I mean, I do have a letter here. I feel like I should just read it just because this woman went so far as to write it in for the board. It says, hello, everyone, I hope all find you well. My name is Jacinta Carrion Williams, more commonly known to some as Cindy Williams, and I am a longtime resident of Foxborough. Well, I've had the benefit of growing up in Foxborough as well as had the opportunity to own a couple homes in town. I am writing in support of the MAPC Housing Production Plan. I find that in speaking with several town residents that struggle, the struggle is very real for many, myself included, to find suitable housing outside of a rental to meet current needs. These days rental prices are very high, if not equal, to what one would pay for a mortgage. I see my generation being priced out of town and wonder what is to become of some of the senior citizens in town that no, can no longer afford or to manage their larger homes and are unable to size down as they, as the prices they would have to pay for a smaller home right now are equal or more expensive to what they currently own. In addition, smaller homes are almost nonexistent as they are frequently purchased by contractors buying them and building much larger homes in their place with price ranges out of alignment with what the average person in town can afford. I often hear the town has exceeded 40B requirements so they don't need to worry about meeting those needs anymore. However, what about the human factor involved? What, what about instead of worrying about meeting their requirements, we instead focus on the needs of the people within the town of Foxborough and look to see how their needs can be accommodated within a town they have grown to love and have called home for so many years? Looking at the current environment, we also need to consider what the long-term effects of this pandemic has done or will do to many residents that have been struggling to maintain their residences. What are they going to do now and how will this affect them in the future? We also need to consider that in Foxborough, we have a problem with perception versus reality. While many people who either visit or think Foxborough is a pretty affluent town due to the stadium, the reality is that we have a real challenge in meeting the housing needs of our residents. I think we should give great consideration to this plan based on the many people that took the time to address the concerns of various town residents and possible future residents either looking to rent or own, but nonetheless to be able to call Foxborough home. Respectfully submitted, Jacinta Carrion Williams, Cindy Williams, it's dated today. So I, she was nice enough to write a letter, so I didn't want to let that go. So does anybody have anything? Is there anybody on Zoom? I think John.
I did think I saw Joan Galavan there, but.
Yeah, I see two people.
Joan's here, seems like she might want to say something.
Oh, wait, I should note, we are close to.
Joan, you're on mute.
We are close to 9:30, so we do have to limit.
Joan, you're still muted.
Joan, you're on mute.
Should be a little button on the bottom.
She's right, Miss Allo.
Is there another gentleman who wants to speak in the meantime?
Found it, found it. Joan Galavan found her unmute.
Okay.
Joan Galavan, 900 George Drive, Foxborough. This is a fantastic plan. We have a lot of background information leading up to what I believe is, is the Housing Production Plan, which sort of begins with the strategies. They call it the priority strategies. And that's on page 104. Now those priority, if someone on the planning board might note these things. Because it's such a long document, it is really difficult to get through. And I found ways to make it a little bit easier. But I think that's the main emphasis as you come up to what's called the Housing Production Plan. So it's on page.
104.
104, they start those strategies. But then they're also combined in a shorter list because, not a 104, it's 92 to 104. 92 to 104 are the strategies. And as listed as seven items, and they each have a couple of pages on them, talking all about them, and then they also list the action items. So 92 to 104 are those strategies. Then at the end of the strategies, they list them in a column on page 106. So I think that's good to see that from 92 to 104 are those strategies. They also list them on page 78, I think it is. Is it strategies? Nope, it's not 78. But I'm saying that's what it is on these.
Does she have any comments?
Joan, do you have any comments?
On the substance?
Yes.
On the substance?
I think that these strategies are, they call them priority strategies, but they should be, by this Housing Production Plan, they should be prioritized. They've done a lot of studying on this. They have had input. They have had input by the community, surveys, all kinds of things. And I think they really should be prioritized. I have my own, and I want to tell you tonight, that I think if we ever took on the development of the Walnut Street property, that is enough to keep everybody busy for the next five years. There might be little things we could do. You can pick out of the other strategies. But it seems to me, if you read this, and I think I need to know more, that there's so much about this already that's been done. And it seems to meet all of these goals that we have talked about and are in here. And it just seems like that's the perfect one to go forward with. Now, if things pop up, they have to deal with, fine, but it's right there. And I don't think it should be called increase the housing authority priority because maybe that's part of it or one of the steps. But I think there's other ways. We should have an implementation committee that may just take that on. We should have some subcommittees if you have another priority or a strategy that we want to pursue. Because I think that's what's going to make it happen. There's so many complex pieces to this Walnut Street property and so much has been done. I'm excited about it because I think that's, you know, probably all we possibly could do when you look into this project. So I wanted to focus on that and try to get the committee to finalize this by prioritizing a little bit more and having us ready to do some of this implementation or take action. I think it's too wide open right now, this whole draft. It just lists so many things and so many possibilities. And, you know, they talk about them for another 20 pages here. But I need them to narrow this down. So that's what I'm hoping we can get out of this.
Thank you very much. There was another gentleman there, I think, who wanted to comment.
Hi, my name is Mark Powers. May I comment?
Please.
Okay. One of the things in following the Housing Production Plan, I participated in the survey that was out this summer into the fall. And I was dismayed when the HPP was produced to see that the alignment of the priorities really almost was flipped from what the survey said should be priorities in town. I'd ask you to go back and take a look at the survey. Look at what people who participated in the survey put down as important to the town. Quick example, cottage housing. Cottage housing ranked near the bottom in the survey. Now, the survey had over 300 participants. So it's a, you know, in my mind, that's a pretty good representation during a COVID year for what you're going to get out of the town. It's very difficult during these times to get people to get out to meetings, hear what's going on. The other thing, last week at the selectmen's meeting, MAPC listed some towns that they had produced housing production plans for. And I took a look at a number of these. And I went back to the 2005 plan they produced for Winthrop. And the overview for Winthrop sounds an awful lot like what we're dealing with here. That there was concern about elderly residents in the town of Winthrop with rising housing prices. That could they stay in their houses? And could people who were younger, who had grown up in Winthrop, be able to afford homes there? And so, you know, part of what we're looking at is not a Foxborough issue. This is a national issue. Paige said that this document was, you know, Foxborough-specific. It is when you go through each of the items. But if you take a look at what the HPPs in the other towns involve, there's not much new there. The overlay districts, everything that goes right on down the line is contained in those other plans. I would just ask people, think about this. I think this is a major change. The idea of allowing freestanding buildings that people will rent in their yards, I certainly don't understand that at all. I think, you know, when we talk about in-law apartments, maybe if we want to move away from having people rent to just their families, but if they have an attached apartment to their house and they live with it, but a freestanding, we're building homes. We're building houses on lots that were not intended to have two houses. That's just my few comments for this evening.
Thank you, Mr. Powers. I think there's another gentleman there who might have something to say. Sir?
Are you referencing me?
Yes, I am, sir.
Okay. I didn't raise my hand, but yeah, you know, I'm perplexed because.
Can you just tell us who you are?
I'm sorry?
Can you just tell us who you are?
Yes, John Schlebeck, 13 Faxon Street, Foxborough. I'm perplexed because, you know, 40B is a state mandate. But what I see here is it seems like we're aspiring to reduce the average cost of housing in our town for no apparent reason other than, you know, I'm being told that people who live here, who at one time were younger, who did afford their house, their house is appreciated in value, which is a good thing. And for whatever reason, they don't want to, they no longer want to live in that house. And what I also just heard is that if they want to go to a smaller house, that that smaller house either doesn't exist or if it does, it costs more money than the large house they're in, which, I don't know, it doesn't make sense to me. And I'm just curious why we're not allowing the market, you know, a free market to drive, you know, what gets developed here. You know, obviously, you know, within the bounds of zoning, but, you know, there was a reference to large houses being built. You know, I mean, large houses are not going to be built if people aren't going to buy them. And apparently people are buying them. So I'm just, you know, I think we're going down a really slippery slope here when we talk about, you know, creating very low-cost housing and high-density development, you know, which to me just turns into a tremendous burden on the town that, you know, can drag down everyone's property values eventually and increase taxes, not to mention tax, you know, the infrastructure in the town, whether we're talking, you know, about water or schools or, you know, roads and things like that. So I think there's a lot of touch points here that, you know, aren't really being evaluated and a lot that could go wrong with this. Thank you.
Thank you. Anything else anyone wants to add?
No.
Not this time.
It's time to go, but I will say that there's no high density.
We do have one more person on Zoom, Marlene, please.
Thank you. My name is Marlene DeLeaun. I live at 19 Born Road. We've been residents here since 1987. And what I'd like to say is that the housing plan is not designed to be an exclusive plan for all houses to be built in Foxborough. It really is saying, let's provide a way for some limited housing that will address the needs of those who cannot afford the biggest homes of which, you know, if you look at the way housing development has gotten in Foxborough, you know that all of the housing built has been large homes with few exceptions. And this is just saying, create some designated spaces and ways to build a few affordable homes. That isn't going to drive all of the market. It's going to provide a segment of housing for people who are elderly, people who are first-time owners, people who are single, single-parent families. Again, it's just serving a fragment. It's not going to change the whole picture of housing in Foxborough and all of the plans for housing development in Foxborough.
Thank you. Roger?
Do we have anybody else? I think that's it. So anyway, the main reason for this presentation, we sorry for the condensed amount of time. We have a curfew. But we did want to get the word out. It is getting out. I appreciate everybody giving their time. Please submit your comments. I am regrouping and I do think that in light of all the comments we've had that we're going to probably hold another sort of, unfortunately, it's going to be up to Zoom, but some sort of workshop or discussion in January. Maybe to get, there's been a lot of people in town working on housing. And I think the residents hearing from the residents who've been working on this, in addition to me, but I don't live in town, so I'm not trying to do it. So I'd rather you all hear from some of the residents. So I think we're going to have another opportunity to talk about this because we don't want to rush this through. The one thing I've learned in Foxborough is it's a fast no or a slow yes. Now granted, this is, if we ever get to this point of HPP being approved, it would be a slow yes. There's no such thing as fast when it comes to housing right now. But we are not trying to rush this through. We do want to do a good job. We do want to, you know, John Schlebeck and Mr. Powers, I have had their letters. I hear what they're saying. They're not alone. So I do want the opportunity for folks to discuss this because I do think folks like Marlene and Joan, who've been on the other side, you know, maybe that's a great discussion that these groups can all have. And again, nothing in this plan will change anything today. Everything in this plan would require more action by the town and town meeting. So doing this would not commit the town to any financial commitment. It would not change the housing in the community. So thank you, everyone, for your attention. Thank you all at home on Zoom. And let's continue the conversation. I know it's, I'm sick of it too. But, you know, it is an important issue. As you could see, you know, having folks on the line at 10 o'clock at night, you know, an hour and a half or two hours late shows the commitment. So this is an important issue. If it's not for you, you're very lucky. But maybe help out your neighbor and join this conversation and let's work together. So December 18th is the cutoff for deadline, for comments.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, everybody.
Do you have a ready motion, Roger?
We have a motion, yes.
Second.
All those in paper?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you all very much.
Thank you all for your patience.